Session of the Southampton Town Board to order on this 25th day of August 2022. Please rise and join me for the pledge.
I'm good.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Supervisor Schneiderman?
Here.
Councilwoman McNamara?
Here.
Councilwoman Martel?
Here.
Councilwoman Bouvier?
Here.
Councilwoman Scovoni?
Present.
All right, everybody is here. And we will begin today's work session with an update on the Bridgehampton and Sagaponic Beach Erosion Control District. We are joined by Deputy Town Attorney Kathleen Murray. We also have Aram Turchinian from First Coastal, Dr. Tim Kana from Coastal Science Engineering, and some others from the Bridgehampton Sagaponic ECD. So without further ado, I guess Kathleen, do you want to introduce us?
May I invite Aram and Dr. Kana up?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Good morning, members of the town board. So you may recall back in January of this year, Aram and Dr. Kana were here to speak about the status of the existing beach erosion control districts for Bridgehampton and Sagaponic, and also to discuss efforts to renew the Bridgehampton and Sagaponic Beach Erosion Control District Renourishment projects. By way of background, and to oversimplify it with a reminder, those projects, which were established in 2013, placed approximately 2 million cubic yards of sand, or 1 million cubic yards per district, along roughly six miles of contiguous ECD shoreline, three miles roughly for Sagaponic and three miles roughly for Bridgehampton. The life of the 2013 project and the attendant bond was 10 years, and so we are approaching that 10-year mark in 2023. So with us, Dr. Kana and Aram are here to talk about two things. First, the final phases of the 2013 project, which includes beach monitoring and data collection, which was always part of the plan, and two, the progress as it relates to the commencement of the new 10-year beach nourishment project. Back in January of this year, you may remember, and based upon interest expressed by some of your advisory committee members from the Bridgehampton and Sagaponic ECD Advisory Committee, some of whom are here with us today, and if you'd like to invite them up, we could do that, this board decided to begin moving forward with the next phase of a 10-year beach nourishment project. So in furtherance of that effort, you adopted two resolutions, and each for each district, you adopted two resolutions. One resolution to execute a contract with Aram and Dr. Kana to begin working on a map, plan, and report, and the attendant cost estimate for a new 10-year project, and two, you added it to your capital budget and your capital program, which you had to do. So at this time, I will turn it over to Aram and Dr. Kana, and if you'd like-
Just one clarifying point.
Sure.
So it was a 10-year project for something like in the ninth year or eighth year of it?
Ninth.
Ninth year?
Yes.
And so there wouldn't, and though some of the original project is still there-
Quite a bit.
Quite a bit. So now you'd be doing, sort of replicating what you did. Ultimately, I guess you'll end up with something even bigger than the original project, slightly or about the same?
Well, that's going to come out of the engineering.
All right. But my main question is, because the property owners took on quite a bit of debt burden, right? They've been paying property taxes. I just want to make sure there's no overlap in that, because I understand that it may not come a year where they don't pay any property taxes for the ECD. It won't go down to zero one year, but it won't double one year either.
Right.
So that's the idea, is that it's sort of a steady tax hit?
Yes, and we've been working with the town comptroller, and your former town comptroller, Lamarcase, to make sure that we can get that timing right. There's two things that we're kind of cognizant of. One is what you've talked about, Mr. Supervisor, which is not having an overlap, but also in terms of kind of keeping the continuity, because I think we'd rather not have a year of zero, and then we'd have to override your tax cap in the following budget year. Right now, you had a local law. We did a local law back in 2013, allowing for the override of that New York State tax cap. If we lose a year in that after the 10-year mark, then you'd have to pass another local law. So not mechanically a big deal, but just in terms of letting the public know, it's so, you know, it'd be easier to just keep that seamless stream, if that makes sense. Does that make sense?
Yeah, if the project's needed, I guess.
Yes, of course, 100%. And that's a, obviously, there's a public hearing process. I can talk about that now or later.
Well, let's let Aram talk.
Sure.
Well, actually, before you hear from Dr. Kana and I, perhaps it'd be good to hear from the ECD Advisory Board residents.
Well, actually, let's wait. Let's hear the project first, and then let's make sure that they're on board with it.
I do have a question about the taxes. Is there currently a tax in the Sagaponic Coastal Erosion District?
Yes, absolutely. It's at the very bottom of your tax rate sheet, Councilman Scovoni, on the first page or in the second page. It's at the very bottom, and it should say Sagaponic Beach Erosion Control District and Bridgehampton Beach Erosion Control District. You see it? So it says down here, it says total Bridgehampton Beach Erosion Control District-
Okay, thank you.
And then total Sagaponic. I don't know why it's not up here, to be quite honest with you.
Or in the part that says erosion district.
Yeah, maybe that's just a, that's just a formatting issue we can speak about.
Thank you, okay, good.
But yes, it's always been on your tax rate sheet, 100%.
Right. And in some cases, it's a pretty significant amount of money.
There is.
Depending on how big your property is or assessed valuation of your property. It's, I think it's a, it's a combination, right, of linear footage-
It depends on your district. Bridgehampton, right now, well, if Bridgehampton is based upon your linear waterfront footage, Sagaponic is based upon a combination of your linear waterfront footage and your assessed value.
That's wrong.
And, and just a point of information, those calculations and that methodology, according to the law, cannot change. So even if we go forward, the methodology has to remain the same as it was when first established.
And that was approved by the state comptroller.
It was.
Okay. All right. All right, Aram?
Tim, take it away.
Okay. Well, good morning, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Supervisor, for the introductions, and it's good to see you all again. The last time we spoke, it was back in January, and we had a little different slide on the first, but I wanted to show you this one, which was sent up to us by Marty, one of your residents, took this picture.
Actually, one of the town employees, Christian Peterson, took this.
Town Line Road, back in May, after we had a series of wind events, northeasters, that really carved out the beach. And so one of the things we're trying to do is deal with these localized temporary erosion events that do start impacting properties. Many purposes of renourishment, but hit, hit the bottom line right there, maintaining property values in the tax base of the community is huge, because that's what's really funding projects like this. But we have all these other benefits that accrue as well. A wider beach means more recreational area for all your residents and tourists. Wider beach means more habitat area for wildlife, birds, and so on. And a wider, dry sand beach allows the group, the dunes to naturally grow higher, and with higher dunes, high dunes, good setbacks, means less damage during storms. That's the key takeaway from all this. The Bridgehampton-Sagaponic projects were combined, and this was a big advantage, having a five-mile-long project is going to last four times longer than a two-mile-long project. So by combining the two districts, two BECDs into one big project, we actually improved the longevity of the project, because there's a basic rule in our, our business, when you double the length of the project, you quadruple the lifetime of the project. And that's because the sand will spread away from the ends. So imagine if you just nourished in front of your house, but your neighbors didn't do anything. Well, your neighbors would be really happy. They would be getting your sand, and your sand would be eroding very quickly as it, as it spread, and the beach tries to even out. So that's why we like longer projects. We've divided the project into four reaches, two in Sagaponic and two in Bridgehampton. You're all familiar with this. And just to show you some conditions that we had the last year or so, we look for wavy shorelines. Some places on your shoreline might be 200 feet wide, but others, less than 100 feet wide or less than 50 feet wide. And in this part of the coast, we need to have a buffer of about 150 feet, because that's the variation, that's the natural variation of the beach. So if you go to Quog right now, Quog has some areas that are 150 feet wide, but they also have some areas that are about zero feet wide. So if you don't have that 150-foot additional width on top of whatever you want to have, you're going to have the erosion problems like we saw in the first slide at Town Line Road. Those erosion waves will come in. This photograph doesn't show it very well, but the one on the upper right there shows some of that waviness of the shoreline. So we look for that. We look for erosion hotspots, and we try to maintain enough cover on the beach, enough beach width, so that we can avoid that.
So I'll, I'll jump in here, Tim.
Please do.
You know, I think it's important to, you know, my dad always told me, when you're painting a room, every once in a while, you've got to step back and make sure it's all matching up. So I take this as an opportunity to look back at the, at the benefits that have accrued over the last almost decade. And, you know, this is a list of them. We were the best restored beach in America in 2018. That's quite a prestigious award. We've increased the number of plover pairs from 12 to 20, from, from 2012 to 2020. The public access has been enhanced. The public infrastructure at parks, which in some cases was at threat, has now been protected, and we have new dunes forming. And Tim, if you advance forward, we'll just show you some examples of this. Here's our best restored beach award in March of 2013. Here's the increase of plover nesting. So we're actually realizing these habitat values that we had anticipated, at 1.5 nesting pairs per year increasing. And, you know, this is Sagmaine Beach, and, you know, spend a little bit of time on this slide, because you can see, you know, from the parking lot, there's dense vegetation where the pavilion was, but that's actually where the beach had eroded to before we started the project. And then if you see the lighter green in front of the pavilion and also to the upper right of the slide, that's all new dune forming as a result of the project. So, and you can see, even with the new dune forming, you still have a tremendously wide, well-used public beach in front of that. So this kind of, this, this picture kind of encapsulates all the benefits that we're talking about that accrue from the wider beach. And, Tim?
Yeah, what we do, we, we, we think of the beach as a big sandbox, starting at the dune and going out some distance offshore. We, we measure offshore, a couple thousand feet offshore into 40-foot depths of water, because there, there's a lot of exchange of sand between the underwater part of the profile and the visible dry beach that you put your beach blankets on, as well as the dune. I liken it to a, a house. A house without a basement is not going to be, or without a foundation, is not going to stand up. The foundation of your beach in this sandbox is the underwater sand, and a lot of people forget about that, because they don't see it, but that is very important. So we track that volume, and by tracking that, it can give us, it's sort of a forerunner. It, it tells us that if we have a big deficit in the underwater part of the profile, that means that after a storm, we don't have material to come back up to restore the beach. So we're going to cannibalize the, the visible part of the beach. So that's what we look for in these. And fortunately, Bridgehampton-Sagaponic have been performing very well. For the first six, seven years, we were still retaining 100% of the volume that we put in, and as we've stated in our reports, a lot of this had to do with the timing of the project after Hurricane Sandy. Sandy, as you know, took a lot of sand out of the dunes, off the visible beach, and put it underwater and sent it way offshore. So as we put in new sand on the visible beach in 2013, after Sandy, the sand that had eroded from Sandy that was offshore sort of merged with that. So we kind of built the, the beach from both directions. Nature was building it up from the underwater part of the profile, and we were building it from the upper part of the profile. So that's why we had such great performance for the first six or seven years. But now, if you look at what happened last year, we only have about 53% of the volume remaining in the sandbox in Sagaponic, about 75% in Bridgehampton. And that's because we were losing so much in the underwater, and that's, that's the signal, the trigger to us that says, okay, it's time to start thinking about a renourishment.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, absolutely.
What are you attributing that to, sea level rise, for the most part?
No, it's, it's just, we've seen this in many other projects. It's, it's a gradual winnowing of the project, shift of sand in the longshore direction, much of it going to Southampton Village and, and, and further to the west. Some is actually spreading back east to Georgia Gippon, because, you know, when the waves are out of the west, it's going to move to the east.
So what about going-
Offshore.
Offshore, well, onshore as well?
Yes, and we track-
Water intrusion, and are you-
Yeah, we track the offshore. The component of sea level, the impact of sea level rise on the beach profile, volume change, is just a small fraction of what the total change is.
Tim, if I may, in our industry-
Sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, no, no.
It's all right.
This is a really good point. There are three main causes of beach change, addition or subtraction, doesn't matter. That's sand supply, wave energy, and sea level rise. Those are the three factors. Of those factors, sand supply is 90% of the game. 10% is a combination of storms and sea level rise. Sea level rise is like 1%, 2%, 3%, because, you know, even, you know, right now, the sea level rise is a foot per century, even if that accelerates, it's still a very small percentage. So what's happening, one of the reasons we see Sagaponic losing more than Bridgehampton is what Dr. Kana talked about, is a lot of that sand moved east of Town Line Road into the Wayne Scott area. So that, and that's what we call end losses, and that's, so that, that's probably why we're seeing a higher loss rate in that area.
Yeah, because it's interesting to be watching the clip maps and things through the iconic S U R and see where the rise is and the topographies and all of those, or the sub watershed and saltwater intrusion, and all these things mixing together, it's a lot to juggle.
Can you see the deposition in East Hampton?
Yes, yes.
That's visible?
It's visible.
Okay.
Also, it's the frequency of northeasters and storm events. You know, we had a little, little bit more energy impacting the project the last, last year or two, rash of northeasters.
That, that, didn't mean to take, take a-
No, that's quite right. This just-
Well, I kind of did, but it was-
Quickly, to show you, the, the target scope of work for the upcoming project would be a little less than what we did in 2013. We're looking at 1.7 to 2 million cubic yards as the target volume, split equally between the Bridgehampton and Sagaponic BECDs. We'll use similar borrow areas as we used in 2013. I'll show you in a moment. We had three different borrow areas that were strategic and, and very effective.
Just a term of art, a borrow area is the place we get the sand from to put on the beach?
The construction budget that we've come up with is approximately $23 million. This is based on recent prices for, for dredging. Talk about that, and, but what we have to do is search for some new sand, because we want to make sure that we have sufficient reserves of sand available, not just for this project, but for an emergency project after a storm, because you're going to qualify for FEMA restoration funds. You're a publicly accessible beach, and this is very important. It's, it's almost like your insurance policy that you don't have to pay for if we get another Hurricane Sandy in the area. The basic design approach that we've taken, and we've just finished our 55th large nourishment project down at Cape Hatteras, basically, we try to define the condition of the beach in any place, determine what the volumetric erosion rates are and what the sand deficits are with respect to a healthy beach. We try to find the nearest source of quality sand. We try to move it the cheapest way, whether it's trucking, or dredge, or shovels. Whatever is the cheapest, that, that's to save everybody money. And then we try to protect the environment. I, I call it cover our tracks, because we like to build projects that the general public, the layman, cannot tell from an engineered beach. We want it to look as natural as possible. In fact, one of the things about your project, when we were building it, normally, you can see the difference in sand color from what's been just pumped from the ocean bottom onto the beach. There's, it's always a little bit, maybe some mud in it or some organisms, and it just gives a little darker color. It happens just about everywhere, and it eventually bleaches out. We were hard-pressed to find where the nourishment sand stopped and the natural sand began. In other words, it was almost seamless, which was blowing our minds at the time, because we had never had a borrow area quite that good. Nag's Head was the, the closest we had to it. And the reason is, you don't have a lot of mud offshore, it's an energetic environment, and you have really super-good quality sand available to us, once we find where the good, good deposits are. And that's because in 40 to 50 feet of water, guess where the sea level in the beach was 10,000 years ago? It was right there.
Right there.
So we're taking sand out of what used to be the ancient beach 10,000 years before anybody was, was living here.
Tim, can I ask a couple quick questions?
Yeah.
So you, you said that the project was slightly smaller, but your projected costs are the same. Is that correct?
Right.
Is that because the price has gone up?
Yes.
Per yard of sand, cubic yard of sand?
Yeah, unfortunately, and this isn't, this is in a 10-year period, so we're still seeing, we're seeing incremental cost rises. Fuel is 15 to 20% of a dredger's cost, and so that impacts a lot of the-
You also said you were sort of spreading the project out evenly between the two ECDs, but the latoral drift is predominantly to the west. So would, why aren't you do, therefore, doing more sand to the east, which will then migrate to the west and to balance it out?
Sure. Well, I put my scientist hat on first, it's not the final, final distribution of the sand, but we, for preliminary planning purposes, we need to have a, a target. So we, we did it on kind of an even Steven basis. We are going to be doing some modeling as part of the, the design work to evaluate whether it is indeed better to put a little bit more, you know, on the Sagaponic area and let it feed down-
Let it feed.
And give us more longevity.
Kind of leads-
So that's, that decision hasn't been made, and of course, we want to do it in consultation with the BECDs and you all, because it's, it's your property owners that are-
I figured you'd learn from experience, because you've already done it, so you sort of know how the sand redistributes itself. So that sort of leads me to my last question. So as the sand pushes, obviously, those people on Meadow Lane become the, the lucky winners of sand that they didn't pay for, right?
Right.
And they could probably afford it. And Georgica, on the other side, if they don't do this, if they did do it, it would sort of help us on the economy scale, correct?
Absolutely.
And maybe lower the cost for some of the people in Bridgehampton and Sagaponic, and at the same time, we'd also benefit from some of the sand that they put there getting pushed our way. So what is, what is the status of the Georgica ECD?
Yeah, let me have Aram or Jeff address-
I've, I've had some preliminary discussions with the town of East Hampton about, because they're looking at ECDs for downtown Montauk as well. And, you know, there's a couple of different ways to approach that. One is to go through the BECD process. Another way is, you know, there's only a, and I think there's a dozen property owners in the Wayne Scott area, when, before you get to Georgia Gippon, and it's, if the town attorney felt that this was appropriate, you could enter, the town could enter into an agreement with those property owners to participate on a pro-rata basis.
How would we collect the money?
It would be a contract, but I, you know, that's just an idea.
So it wouldn't be in the property taxes, in that case?
Right.
Are they interested in arenas?
They have been interested in the past, and that is one thing that I'm working on now, to find out that level of interest. I know that Mr. Lauder's group has been very interested, as Mr. Eva Stell has been also very interested for years.
I can tell you about one situation we, we just got finished with in South, South Carolina, where a community, private community of about 30 houses paid for a project that was organized, their board approved everything, but there were 13 homeowners just north of that, up coast of them, and they all wanted to do something, but they couldn't get all the second row and back, backshore folks to, to buy into it. So they, they came to our team and said, is there some way we can just pay you to put extra sand on the beach? So we had to get individual agreements from each of those property owners, and it, it allowed us to increase the project from 400,000 yards to about 450,000 yards, and that bought some extra sand just up coast of where our main client was, so that it'll feed down into that. So it was an advantage to each, but it is kind of a hassle, because, you know, you're dealing with individual property owners that, and oftentimes, you're not going to get everybody to buy in.
I'd be uncomfortable if the town were laying out capital money and then trying to collect it back from people who weren't in the town. I think you need a separate entity, and maybe they need to front that money, those property owners, so there is no debt obligation, it's just prepaid.
Yeah.
And another entity could collect it over time.
Yeah, I think, I think you're absolutely right about that.
You probably could structure that. The easiest, if East Hampton were to form an ECD in that area, but if they're not looking to do that, then maybe there's another-
Well, I'll, I'll advance, you know, that idea with Supervisor Van Skoyak, and perhaps, you know, you and he, or the town attorney and, and Mr. Zelnicki will have a conversation.
So, so how does this fit together with FIM?
Totally separate.
But you're borrowing sand from the same sand pit in some way?
It's, it's their, it's their authorized borrow site, but they have no, they have no plans to use this borrow site. So there are a number of borrow sites along the entire shoreline that were authorized.
So are they going to federal sources, like B O E M?
No, they just, this is too far away for any of the projects they're going to do. So the borrow site, for example, for the Hampton Bay's East Quog, Quog project is right off the shoreline there. So they would, this is too far away for them to use economically.
They're not going to be putting sand in this part of the beach?
The FIM project jumps from basically the inlet all the way over to Montauk.
Well, I'm, I'm talking more in terms of expanding this idea of more agreements with ECDs across somewhere along the line that's going to, that's going to come in conflict. And, you know, somebody's going to say, well, I'm paying for sand twice. You know, that's all-
Well, this is, these borrow areas that we're using are not federal borrow areas.
Not yet.
No, they, they can't be. They're state.
Yeah.
They're state and-
It's slave owners.
But in this-
Is that a possibility?
No, because it's statutory, you know, it's state-owned bottom.
Yeah.
Can I ask one other financial question?
They'd have to change the boundary of the state.
I've raised this, I've raised this before, but I'm going to raise it again, because I'm, you know, I'm doing my capital, you know, the, the capital budget that I'm going to propose to the town, and I, this is not a project that's in it for the town. So I know the first time this was done, it was a $26 million project. Property owners paid roughly $25 million, and I believe the town put up $1 million in bond issuance, because we own some of the property, like Sagmaine Beach, et cetera. Was hoping that this time, that we would not be going back to the town for additional contributions. Is part of your formula going back to the town, or is the town left out this time?
Well, we haven't really gotten to that point yet. You're right, Mr. Supervisor, the first time around, the town paid one-half of its pro-rata share, which was $1.5 million, and we used park reserve monies to pay that, to pay that, and then homeowners within the districts donated the remaining $1.5 million. The, what you're asking would be reflected in the map plan and report, and we can talk about that, we can work on that.
But we're not obligated, right? We're taxing-
No, legally, we're exempt from contributing, or having to contribute to any special improvement district. But obviously, the continuity of- But obviously the continuity of the sand, you know, fronting along the town parcels is important, so we do have to try and figure that out. I don't know if there's park reserve monies...
Is there a request being made?
I think that it's properly placed in front of the advisory board members that are here today.
Okay, so up to, right now, I haven't seen any requests, it is not in the proposed capital budget, so, but we can discuss that.
Well, I did recently present to your capital budget committee and it's the full amount of the project that's proposed in there, which is the twenty...
No, I saw that.
Okay.
But I, but that was all proposed to me as billable back to the ECD.
Correct, yes. So we can review our park reserve funds?
Because they said a lot of money, honestly, it's twenty-six million dollar project.
Yes, yes.
A lot of that went to the Flying Point Beach Pavilion project, park reserve money.
Okay.
But we have to look at it.
Yes.
And we have huge capital asks, project asks.
So, but it doesn't seem like, it's a pretty, it's a big project and we don't know about Georgiaqah yet, but maybe it's a twenty-five million dollar project now to twenty-six million dollar project at the end of the day to adjust for that. So that the property taxes remain stable and the town isn't asked, we don't have a magic source of money, right? It's all property taxes.
Really? I can't believe that.
We don't, you know, and this is not a...
Unless you find all...
This is not CPF fundable, this is, I have to collect it in property taxes from everybody, not just the oceanfront property owners. You could make an argument that these are public beaches, we have, you know, Scott Cameron in the mix here and Flying Point and I guess Meacock Beach is in that, so...
Yeah, there are four town parcels in Bridgehampton and one in Sagaponic. There were two, but since the, since within the last ten years, one parcel was sold, 152 sand dune court was taken out of town ownership. So there's five.
Was this area always out of the FIM plan? Back in nineteen fifty-seven when they hatched this plan and they had been talking about it my entire life, they say Sagaponic and Bridgehampton are not in the Fire Island.
No. Here's the way that works.
Is it because we created this?
No, it's not a function of us, it's a function of the Army Corps. So Congress authorized the plan from Fire Island inlet to Montauk Point. So the entire shoreline is in the authorized plan. But in order for the Army Corps to use federal money to build a project, they have to have a benefit cost ratio in excess of one. Now, the way, the Army Corps doesn't do a benefit cost ratio the way that you and I would do one, they do it based solely on damage to structures from a storm. So this area, despite the fact that it has very large homes, would not generate enough damage from a storm to those, either whether it's a pavilion or a house, to justify the federal expenditure. What you see is the only way you can justify, the Barrier Island never generates enough damage, it's always the damage on the mainland. So for example, the reason that the Tiana stretch is not just authorized but appropriated and going to get built is because the damages that would occur in Hampton Bays and East Quogue from a breach of the Barrier Island. But if you go to Sagaponic, there's no Barrier Island to breach, it's all just headlands. You get one row of houses, whereas on Shinnecock Bay and Almerichus Bay, you have the barrier, then you have all the homes that are fronting on the bay, which are hundreds and hundreds and hundreds more. So that's, so it's just strictly economics.
Does that include infrastructure?
I'm sorry?
Infrastructure, new infrastructure?
Yeah, all that is calculated into the...
Which can escalate and may escalate quite significantly due to some renewable projects and other things as well. So it's just something to keep in mind.
Well, yeah, it is, you know, it's authorized and if we could justify it, you know, we would be eligible for the money.
Thanks for the explanation.
One thing I want to emphasize is that once you establish the budget for the project and we're told, okay, boys, this is what we're going to spend, this is all we're going to spend, we're not going to spend a dime more than this, this isn't like other capital projects where you can't build ninety-five percent of the bridge. We can build ninety-five percent of the beach because it's sand. And so we usually formulate the projects with a little bit of a play in it, but it's our mission, we always find, to try to maximize the budget and the volume of sand that we can place. In some cases, we've actually been able to put additional sand in if it's permitted because the dredging cost came out lower. I can only count on about one hand the number of times where we had to go back to the client and say, well, the bids came in about ten percent higher than we were projecting, here's why we think it was like that. We have a choice of either cutting back the volume by ten percent or waiting until maybe next year, maybe we can get a lower bid. And we've done that in some cases, so...
So one of the ways that we tried to get competitive bidding is by giving really, really good information to the dredgers. Eliminating unknowns is what gets you the good price on the dredging. So Tim will now explain to you the program that's starting in about a week. There's a group coming up that's going to do about fifty cores in the offshore. So you have here, the three borrow areas are shown in color and then we're going to be coring outside of those areas to look for high-quality beach-compatible sand. Because if we can demonstrate to the dredge company that here are really good sand, thick lenses, ten-plus feet thick, that they can dredge very efficiently, that's how we get the good price. So we spend the money now to save it later.
Yeah, the other reason we got a really good price on your project last time is the borrow areas are just a mile offshore. And so a dredger has the choice of type of equipment they can use. They could bring a cutterhead dredge in, which just sits over the borrow area and pumps directly to shore. And that's a very efficient operation if it's only one mile long. So that's how we built this last one and the other reason it's a pretty good place to work compared to, say, Cape Hatteras, is it's just eight miles to Shinnecock Inlet where they can tow the dredge in for safe harbor during the winter months whenever we have storms. So we just finished a project in Cape Hatteras, which was forty-five miles from the nearest inlet. It was just a horrendous place to work and the wave climate down there is even rougher than it is, you know, off the east end here, off Montauk. So we got a very good price on that one and about, I think it was nine eighty or ten dollars a cubic yard, which was pretty impressive price for the conditions. What we've done with the existing borrow areas, we still have some room left in the old borrow areas that we'll probably utilize, and then we have some other areas that we're going to go into. So just looking at the data that we had from the old cores and areas that we didn't touch, we draw these size distribution curves. On the left, you'll see a picture that shows some gravel on the beach and all that. We try to avoid deposits that have a lot of pea gravel in it, that's not what people want to sit on on the beach. A little bit is okay, but we don't want ten percent of the deposit to be like that. So I just show you this curve, the top one's a frequency distribution curve with coarse material on the left and fine on the right and you see how it has kind of a peak curve there. That's the typical beach size distribution. Most of the sand size you touch and feel is all about the point four millimeter sand. It's a diameter that if you went to your beach, you would know it right away. If you went down to South Carolina, to our beaches, I would say it's going to be much finer down there. It's just a different, different peak in the distribution. So we're going to take the existing data we have, supplement it with thirty additional cores, and what we're going to try to do is match up the grain size of the native beach and what we put on the beach. And these curves are just to show an example from Nag's Head, where we matched up the grain size very well. And when we match up the grain size, we also look at the color and all that so that when you see the new beach, you won't recognize it as an artificial beach. I like to think that Nag's Head and Bridgehampton, Sagaponic are our gold standards when it comes to sand quality. I wish all of our projects had borrow areas available to us that were this good. So we're excited about that. We showed this picture back in January, this sequence, this just shows some of the construction activities from the last project, from the first pumping to the last pumping. It was the Dredge Illinois that did the work and it's Great Lakes Dredge and Dock Company, the biggest company in the country for dredging. As we build the project, there's enough room to where we can cordon off the beach but leave a backshore corridor so people can actually access the beach except for the immediate work area. They'll be able to walk around the sand fencing to the areas that are unnourished. People will be able to put out their beach blankets just a few hundred yards ahead of where we're pumping the sand if we're working to the east. And they'll be able to put their beach blankets a couple of hundred yards behind the active work area.
Except for it's going to be between October and February, so there's not going to be a lot of blankets going out.
Yeah, so...
But there will be a lot of fishermen.
We only cut off...
The backshore corridor provides access for them.
So we try not to cut off access to the beach to the extent possible. Aram, why don't you talk about the economies of scale here that we're going for?
Well, you know, there's a lot of numbers up here and I won't go through every one of them, but I think the two takeaways here is that the price per cubic yard of sand is going up over time and I think that's the point you made, Mr. Supervisor. If you look though, the highest costs are ones that are associated with the Army Corps of Engineer projects and the ones that are starred in green are the CSE projects. You can see that consistently getting an excellent price. But nevertheless, the cost of everything's gone up over ten years and the cost of sand is now different.
Yeah, I mean, even though the sand is sort of free, we're taking, but it's the energy used to get it onto the beach, so the fuel and the labor.
Fuel, labor, steel, those are the huge costs that go in. Plus, you know, these dredges cost, you know, forty, sixty, eighty million dollars.
Find the nearest source of sand, move it the cheapest way, that's our mantra.
So we were asked initially to look at, did it make sense to do a five-year project and just do two five-year projects? And as you can see from the math, there's a substantial cost savings to going with the ten-year project. It's, you know, just about, you know, six million dollars. Plus, we don't have to go through, you know, the environmental permit process twice as well. That is another benefit, also the benefit to the environment, it gets disturbed once every ten years, not twice.
What kills you is the mobilization, right?
Mobilization is always the killer.
Dredge mobilization...
Really five million dollars to mobilize a dredge?
If you haven't seen the operation, it's...
There's about twenty-six different boats.
They have to bring in thousands of feet of submerged pipe, lay it on the ocean bottom in calm conditions, attach it, make sure it's, holds the pressure and all that before they even hook up the dredge. And then you've got the shore crew and all the pipe on the shore. So this involves, you've got fifty, fifty people who are working for literally three to four weeks just to set things up before you see the dredge actually hook up.
Is there any way to piggyback, we're going to have FIM, all right, it's going to be nearby, it's going to be Montauk within a year or two, right?
Yeah.
It's going to be in Hampton Bays.
Yeah, well, you know...
They've got to go Montauk to Hampton Bay, the dredge is going to be coming right past your area.
You want to put in a tool gate? Tool gate?
No, but it just seems like it's here, it's moved from the Great Lakes to here or wherever, from Dubai to here.
I mean, I'm sure the dredging companies are going to be looking at that and it makes sense from a market point of view. If I can do, you know, two jobs instead of one and I've only got to move the dredge, you know, once and then, you know, short ones in between, yeah, it makes sense to me that the market was going to be responding.
Is the timing about the same?
Very close.
It's very close in terms of when the sand is going to downtown Montauk and when the sand is going here?
Yeah. I think we got a break in twenty thirteen because Great Lakes was doing all the sandy work, starting at Coney Island, they were just working their way down. We were added to their list.
Yeah, I only say that because if we could bring the numbers down, it's some relief to the property tax, the property owners.
But we've...
But right now you have a number in there that I guess assumes that the mobilization is only for this project only, full mobilization.
That's a fairly pessimistic number, but it's conservative.
It's the highest I've seen for mobilization. And I was surprised when it was two or three million, so...
It was five point eight.
Yeah, we've had six point five down the Hatteras area.
So we're not headed to Olivine or synthetic sands and anything like that, we're sticking with the natural rock.
Right, right.
Is there any local ocean dredges? Seems like a good business for somebody to go into.
There's only five ocean-certified dredging companies in America. And three are on the eastern Gulf Coast and two are on the west coast.
So we have three.
Weeks Marine is kind of headquartered in Camden, New Jersey, but with a main office down in Louisiana.
Yeah, there's Great Lakes, Weeks, Manson, who are the other two?
Dutra.
Dutra, they're west coast. And Gulf Coast Trallings, are they still around? American dredge?
Yeah, Norfolk has one dredge, Marinex has one dredge that can go offshore, but it's too small to do this.
It's not just getting the dredge here, it's the mile piping to it.
Oh, yeah.
That has to get set up.
Right.
It just seems like there's just not enough competition, it's a lot of money to get a piece of equipment here.
You know, just in the last fifteen, twenty years, there have been several new dredges, more new dredges built by the handful of companies that do this than there had been the previous twenty, because there are more locally sponsored projects like this, more beach projects. There's a lot of post-deepwater horizon work down in Louisiana that is tying up a lot of the dredge plant in the country. Hurricane Sandy generated all of that extra work in New Jersey as well as our south shore here. So the dredgers are responding to this and as they build more dredges, it gives, it makes more competition. So property values are going up like this by orders of magnitude every couple of decades. Dredging costs are going up with basically the construction cost index. And so that's why the economics are still pretty favorable right now despite the rising cost.
All right, go ahead.
So anyway, just to wrap up real quickly, these are some upcoming events, we're going to be doing a lot of work in September. Our annual survey is scheduled for the beach. We're going to redo the borrow areas in detail because we use the bathymetric maps of the borrow areas to identify high spots and the ridges that we like to dredge on. The best sand tends to be on these underwater ridges. And we're not talking about a high dune underwater, but these are areas that are a little bit higher than the surrounding area. They tend to have somewhat coarser, cleaner sand, so we favor those. So we'll do the bathymetric survey starting next week and the week after Labor Day. And then we have a team of, a group that specializes in borings, they can get a little bit deeper than our company can get with our equipment. We elected to try to get somewhat deeper penetration on the cores because if we can confirm a little bit deeper and get DEC to permit a little bit deeper, that means we'll have more sand in reserve for the future. We'd like to be able to identify five or six million cubic yards of super-quality sand so that you could actually come out and do a post-sandy type project on short notice or, you know, having things in the works for the project ten years from now, if you so choose. So that's what's coming up. Aram, you want to speak to the liaison and what we have to do with...
So we've been working with the BECD advisory committees over the course of the summer just to keep them updated. I've had preliminary conversations with various permitting agencies so that they understand we're going to be delivering documents to them probably in October of this year. And, you know, that's going to, you know, we think that this process is going to follow very much the same course it did the first time around. We're looking at the same scope and scale and the agencies were extremely helpful and I anticipate they will be again.
I mean, it seems by most accounts, this was pretty successful. You know, I, you know... You know, I, you know, you remember Dieter Hock, where he built this whole sand dune and it got washed away immediately? And he built it again and it got washed away immediately. So this was not like that, where it was just pouring money away. It was meant to last 10 years, and it lasted 10 years. We had some storms, we had plenty of storms.
Plenty of storms.
And it, and it survived, so.
And it built up for you.
Let's, let's, let me bring Jeff up, anybody else from the ECD. I just want to make sure you guys are all on board since you're, you're paying, paying for this. You can go over here.
Sure.
Yeah, that's fine. So Jeff, it's a lot of money, whatever it is, whether it's 25 million, 26 million, whatever, whether the town's in or not, you guys are shouldering the burden, you know. So how do you feel about the past project, and are you ready to continue and do it again?
Sure. I'm Jeff Lignelli. I was one of the ECD leaders originally. I was looking at my emails before I came in today. My first email on this project was from the summer of 2010. So we really want to start off, also Dave Letterman is here, who's one of our original ECD leaders, and also Dan Greendale were involved in our original ECD board back in 2011 when we set this up. I first want to start off by saying thank you to the current supervisor and the town board members, and also frankly, the prior town boards and supervisor, because we've always had unanimous support, every vote's been 5-0, and because we've always come to the town with a sense of having full transparency, full knowledge, and we wanted to do the project the most professional way possible. We basically have done an Army Corps project. An Army Corps project for those laypeople like, you know, like me, is you, the, the Army Corps is the engineer, so we went out and hired the best engineer I think we could have found in the country in Dr. Kana. And then the Army Corps sources the dredging out to primarily Great Lakes Dredge and Dock that we use. We did our own Army privately-funded Army Corps project. I actually think that our project represents really some of the best public-private partnerships that really have been done anywhere in the state of New York. I just want to thank the town board for all the support you've given us historically because we really did it the right way. And the results show, we won the best beach nourishment award in 2018. The residents are thrilled, the property values have obviously gone extraordinarily high, but also the beaches are beautiful. Hopefully y'all have the chance to go down to our area. If you have a chance, go down to the Meacocks Inlet, I think it's one of the most beautiful places anywhere in the world, frankly. It's like a little part of heaven out on the east end. You have tremendously wide beaches, you have tremendous growth of the dunes, you have amazing vegetation, amazing space for everyone to spread out and enjoy it. And I think it's been one of the true win-wins. And when we started this project, our goal was to have a long-term erosion control strategy that was a win-win for everyone in the town, regardless of where you live in the towns. And we believe everyone has had, had the, all the benefits of this project. So when you look at the project, essentially some of the questions you were asking earlier on, if you want to think about the economics, a person that has a hundred lineal feet of beachfront pays $10,000 per year in taxes. So 200 is $20,000 a year. For a property that is double-digit millions, there's no property in our ECD that's not worth double-digit millions, our view is that that's the best money one could spend. And I think that was one of the original things when we did this project in 2013, is trying to tell everyone, like, we want to spend this money because we can't do it alone. We can't accomplish our goals ourselves without the town and the town board's cooperation and people like Kathleen Murray who were with, with us on our original project. Without everyone working together, we can't achieve this. And I think we've achieved something special we all should be proud of, frankly. And if I were sitting on the board, I was asking a question, I would say, why now? So why, why are we gonna do this now? And the reason we're gonna do this now is for three reasons. Number one is the team mentioned, we are seeing problem spots. There are, we expected erosion on the, on the ends of the project, and we're seeing that at Town Line Road. We also have, you know, there's obviously a management issue with the Meacocks Inlet that the board has funded, a project to open and close the Meacocks Inlet appropriately. We've seen a little bit of erosion on that part of the project. So we have seen some erosion, but we've anticipated that. And second, so, so that needs fixed. Second is, is that one of the main benefits of this project is we get insurance from FEMA that under any named storm, you basically take, take a look at the annual survey that Dr. Kana does, you see how much sand you lost in the storm, and the government pays us that back. So we have an insurance policy for a FEMA-engineered beach. To maintain that insurance, we have to do regular maintenance, and when you look at some of the data, regular maintenance is, is basically due. That's the second reason. And third is that the ECD founders have always planned that this was gonna be an annual tax in perpetuity. Our view is this is the best money you could spend. If you go back to an article in the, January of 2014, right after the project was being completed, you know, basically I was quoted in the paper saying that, you know, we do believe that there will be regular beach replenishment cycles every 10 years, but we do think we have a plan to replace the beach in the long term. And I just think that's always been the plan, is for this to be something that's long-term. The supervisor's question is, is something that is super important. We do not want anything other than a flat tax every year. We don't want there to be any volatility in that tax. We think we've handled our thing, our finances responsibly, working closely with Len in his office, and that would be something we would never want to have happen. So that's the plan of why we're doing it now and the timing. So that's my brief overview.
All right, now, thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. Again, thank you guys for all your, and any questions you have, please feel free to ask. No question is, is, every question is important because we always want to have a fully transparent relationship with the town. And again, we just want to thank everyone for, for all of your time.
Jeff, and I know that you, you're sort of chair of the Bridgehampton ECD. I just want to make sure that you're sort of speaking on behalf of most of the residents. Like, there's a process here, right, Kathleen? Where somebody wanted to challenge this, they can do it. They can't challenge the formation of the ECD, it's already-
Correct.
But a project itself, if somebody said, no, I want this to be done, we've got enough sand, we're through.
So there will be, you know, the next steps of this, and we think the timeline is about the spring, early spring of 2023. You would be doing this pursuant to New York State Town Law 202B. Because the district is already established, it's a bit easier, but nonetheless, still certainly a public hearing process. So once that map plan and report with the cost estimates is done, we circulate that to all of the homeowners within each district, and we put it out to public hearing, and then this board can have this-
But the vote is here, the vote, there's no longer a vote among the property owners.
The vote is at the dais, correct.
Like there was in the beginning.
Correct. There is no referendum by the public. That was just on the establishment of the district, and there is also no control or approval that's necessary.
So that opinion, Jeff, that you have that the property owners want this, have you talked to lots of people? How do, how, what gives you that opinion?
First of all, we have an ECD board that is representative of different people from all the different streets who have a pretty good pulse on who, who the neighbors are. So for example, I'm on Dune Road in Bridgehampton, Dave Letterman's on Surfside Drive, Dan Greene's on Flying Point Road. And, you know, everyone's pretty much in tune to what the residents want. Obviously, any newer residents have come in who've, who've paid high prices for their properties or have rebuilt them, this is the best money anybody can spend. So, you know, I haven't heard of anyone who is not in support of the project, and anyone who, who does, who has questions, I'm very happy to spend time meeting with them.
To, to the supervisor's point, though, Jeff, I think it, you know, might well be worth to have a petition of your, of your membership just to be able to answer that question if it came up, so that you have an idea that, you know, you have 100% agreement or you, you don't know that, and we won't know that. And it might be an easy thing for you guys to do, is just to get the, sort of a, a statement each, each time, each year, that everybody's still in agreement and there's nobody that's wanting to challenge a fellow.
I don't know that you need 100%. It's nice to have 100%.
Or whatever it is, you know, whatever you could work out. It might, might be helpful in a, in a public hearing if you get kind of surprised.
And we've done that historically, and, you know, Councilman Booby, I think that's a very good point. We've actually done regular outreach to our, all the residents in Bridgehampton, Watermill, and as well as Sagaponik. Aaron has had regular dialogues with all the residents by sending them correspondence. We're very happy to send correspondence, saying we're planning on doing the project. If anyone has any questions, please feel free to contact Aaron. We've never done anything other than trying to have full transparency and full knowledge for everybody, and that's why it's been so successful. So, you know, I think we were obviously planning on doing some sort of communication. We're happy to, to, you know, tailor it however the town board would like, working closely with Kathleen and Aaron, and Aaron can, can reach out to people.
Kathleen, are we required to give notice to the neighbors in the district?
Absolutely, yes.
So that's part of the process?
Yes.
Oh, there is a-
Oh, yeah.
A letter that goes out to everybody?
So we will, because, you know, there's about approximately 79 parcels in Bridgehampton and 53 in Sagaponik, and given the values that we're talking about here, we do individual mailings for these notices of public hearing. We don't do this for all of your, you know, special improvement districts. But these, given both the value and the manageability of it, we will absolutely send.
Okay. That satisfies my concern that, you know, they'll have notice, they want to come to the public hearing, they can't.
Right.
Jeff, could you tell us a little bit about the, if we're done with this?
Well, no, I mean, I just wanted to follow on to the, the reason I'm bringing it up is that I just remember another similar situation where someone in a, not in an ECD, but something similar to a neighborhood that was contributing to something.
Underground utility districts.
Fell into economic difficulties, and it caused some, some concerns and issues, particularly as it wasn't, I don't know what the requirement was at the time, I think it was 51% or something like that, that requirement, but this dropped it to right below that. And that was the only reason I'm bringing that up, it was just, because you make, you know, things happen and going on in the future. And you guys are doing this a really good job here and a good thing. It'd be a shame to, you know, have a challenge for whatever reason, but if we have that kind of data, I think it's, I just, I find it useful.
And I think the outreach is very important. We've done that very consistently. Even on a yearly basis, we've updated people on how well the project is holding up. Aaron sent reports out to people. We've been very transparent, and we plan on continuing to do that going forward.
Good, yeah, sounds good.
This is a maintained beach, and because of that, you carry FEMA insurance, you being the erosion control districts carry insurance.
Well, let me explain that. So, so here, here's the way it works.
It's not insurance, I'm just saying.
Yeah, so FEMA-
It's a structure.
So it, the beach when constructed to, is called an engineered beach under the FEMA definition. So FEMA treats an engineered beach constructed by a municipality as a municipal structure. It's a municipal facility. So if town hall is damaged during Sandy, you're eligible for FEMA money, so is the beach. So the way it works is that FEMA will pay 75% of the damage, the state will pick up 12.5%, and then the local is responsible for 12.5%. So you get an 87.5% payment for the damage, and the damage is how much sand was lost from the storm. So you have a survey that we do annually that shows this is the condition of the beach, you do one after the storm, this is how much sand is lost, that's your damage, and that's the claim. So that's the way the process works, and Dr. Kana's done this on several projects.
Many.
Does this have to be a state emergency?
It has to be a federally declared emergency.
Federally declared. So Hurricane Matthew, for example, Irene down in the Hatteras area, we had one after Hurricane Hugo in Myrtle Beach back in 89. It was one of the first ones that-
Anything that's gonna cause substantial damage to this beach is likely gonna be a federal disaster.
And it's only, and it's only the damages caused by that particular storm. That's why the pre-storm survey is, is really important. Each, each year we monitor, and that becomes sort of the pre-storm condition.
So in short, we wouldn't want the event that would trigger this.
Yeah.
It's nice to have it, rather than ever use it.
If it happens, it happens, and we've seen massive storms, and we're likely to see massive storms again. But, you know, the idea here is that if that happened, because it's an engineered beach, there'd be federal money to rebuild it, that's a big deal. If it's just a natural beach and it disappears, like many of our beaches, there's no federal reimbursement.
Right.
And that's sort of why I brought up FIMP, because all things subject to change, particularly in political environments.
And just for the board's education on this, when FIMP is constructed in Hampton Bays and East Quogue and Quogue, if that is damaged by a federally declared storm, doesn't even have to be a federal disaster, it just has to compromise the design, the Army Corps will rebuild it for free. That's under Public Law 8499, so that's a real home run, once that gets built.
Which one, then?
The Tiana section.
The Tiana section.
Yeah, so if that is, if that design is compromised by a storm, doesn't even have to be a federally declared disaster, Army Corps will, is, is, you know, you petition them and they're obligated to rebuild it under-
That's under, under FIMP?
Under FIMP. So it's even a better deal.
All right. Any other questions for-
That's what I was kind of hoping.
For Mr. Lignelli or Dr. Kana or Aaron? All right?
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Take care, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Back to Jeff.
Jeff.
You gotta be careful with that park space and stuff. You don't have any reserves like that.
Do you know what that works out to?
That's what?
Yeah. 1.4 to the ninth.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
The actual budget's not pretty.
No, I hope.
Good morning.
Morning.
All right.
Hello.
Hi.
Hello.
Need a minute to set up here.
You know, actually, now that you're here, because I spoke with Bridget Fleming, and I was asked to talk to you about the Flanders Farmers Market.
Okay.
Maybe we can set up a time here.
Yeah, it'd be great.
Or we can do it over the phone, it's a pretty, pretty quick question.
So we're going, so I guess we'll, we'll wait one moment before we begin. Tommy John will be back.
How's it going?
Well, we had a real busy summer.
Yeah.
Nice to have a little bit of a breather before fall kicks in.
Battle of the Bands was great.
Wasn't that fun? I'm so glad you came. Rick was there, we had a nice crowd, it was a good night. Yeah.
Yeah, we're trying to get the community center going here, too.
Are they really? Oh, that's good, though.
But we're a year behind in entertainment, so.
Oh, so what, people you booked?
Yeah, because we still have 2019 coming up.
Oh, all right.
Is she gonna be there on Monday?
Next one. Get on the waiting ones. But some of them, I think one of them-
This is now gonna be, I think, the topic of conversation more than anything else.
Yeah.
Well, must've been tough picking the winner.
They were all so talented. They really, really were.
It might even be helpful.
Oh, yeah.
Just like the art show, do you remember? I don't know if you had, had, we used to have art shows here for the students.
Yeah, we held one, Creative Arts.
And trying to judge those, you know, especially when the artist is looking at, you know, very hard.
Had a nice crowd there, too. All right, we're still waiting on Tommy John's.
He didn't say when, he said he would be out for a few minutes.
Yeah. Well, maybe we could get started.
Yeah, I think it's on.
All right, so we're going to move on through the next item. Sorry, we're 15 minutes behind in schedule. We're gonna talk about the fall programming schedule for the youth bureau. We're joined by Cara Back, who's Director of Housing and Community Development, Tracy Colson, our Assistant Youth Bureau Director, and Lynn Nylis, our Youth Bureau Director. And I guess, who am I, who's gonna lead the presentation?
Just kind of start us off by saying that, you know, with fall fast approaching, I think some schools actually start next week, we wanted to let the board and the public want to make everybody aware of the programming that, the wonderful programming that the youth bureau has, just tell you a little bit about it and where you can sign up if you're interested. Tracy, please.
We have a slide show we composed. We almost had it.
It does have it.
There we go, we're back on. Okay. So just to start out, yeah, so the Southampton Youth Bureau, exactly who we are. So our mission for the youth bureau really is to provide services to youth in the town
We almost had it. There we go, we're back on. Okay. So just to start out, yeah, so the Southampton Youth Bureau, exactly who we are. So our mission for the youth bureau really is to provide services to youth in the town of Southampton. So we start out by providing recreation programs to actually engage the youth. Our main goal is really for youth development. So we want to encourage the kids to, you know, give them self-esteem, give them confidence, to give them job skills, to become better members of the community, to become better, you know, members themselves and just in general, and then help them succeed. And again, as I was mentioning, what we do that is we do that through recreation programs, through music programs, you know, through Battle of the Bands, you know, so those kind of get them involved in the youth bureau. When we strike up the relationship with them, that's when we offer them the more skill-building programs. How do we do it? And we do it through programs and activities, engaging youth, as I just mentioned. We also do it through community collaborations and partnerships. All of these points we'll go over in the following slides between myself and Lynn. You know, we use research, statistics, and best practices, professional development experiences we bring in for our staff to make sure that the staff is educated and knows how to, know how to work with youth. We do prevention programs and, and we also do clinical services as well. Some of our programs and activities, and again, we'll follow this up with additional slides, is our Youth Advisory Committee, Yak, Broto Horizons, Youth Court, Summer Programs, and et cetera. So I could probably talk about this for hours, but I know that we only have 45 minutes, so that's why I'll.
Might fit down to a half an hour now.
When is this on the timer? So we'll start out with our Youth Advisory Committee. So the Youth Advisory Committee really is our base program. So what happens here is this is where we invite kids that are through middle school through high school, you know, ages, you know, seventh through 12th grade. And the, the way Yak is set up is it's actually self, you know, they work through it themselves. So we actually have a chair, we have a co-chair that they vote on themselves, a secretary and a treasurer. So the groups, we encourage them to run the groups themselves. So what the mission really of Youth Advisory Committee is, is come up with ideas, programs, or things that they feel are absent in the town. So this is actually how some of our more, of other programs have gotten started. So our Battle of the Bands, actually that started through the Youth Advisory Committee. Our Graphic Arts Programs, you know, that started the contest, that started through the Youth Advisory Committee years ago, but they were so successful, you know, we kept these programs going. So what we do with these, with them is we do community service projects also once a month, you know, helping out senior citizens or working with, you know, people in the community. And what also the Youth Advisory does is every program that we do, we do toward youth development. We are not a recreation department or a recreation program. So we have, we always are giving skills for the kids to work on. So group activities provide an opportunity for kids, for youth to improve interpersonal communication, self-governing, structure. I mentioned before that they are, they vote for chair, co-chair as well, so they understand how self-governing works. We give them leadership skills, volunteerism, that again, they do one community service project a month. So they work on developing work ethic, teamwork, compassion, professional presentations. Also, we have guest speakers that do come in and offer them some training on issues that are important to their lives, exposure to the community, art programs as well. So experiences that they don't normally would get, we actually offer to them. So these are some of the pictures of some of the programs we did. So we do a lot of work with senior services because they are in our department and another division. So annually, we go to do leaf cleanup. So those seniors who are homebound, who really can't get out there and pick up leaves for themselves, they get out there, the youth get out there and do that. We usually do it the first for Saturday before Thanksgiving. And the seniors are very grateful for that. They really appreciate the kids coming out there and doing that. We also continue intergenerational work throughout the year. We've recently had our pancake breakfast and Rick, I think you're in that picture all the way over there, so you've witnessed that. So this is our second pancake breakfast that we had. We had one prior to, right before COVID as well. But as you can see, the kids get into it, the seniors get into it. You know, this year, we actually invited one of our youth to do singing as well as the seniors were eating. One of the seniors actually had gotten up there after the youth was singing and she started to sing also, which worked out well, so it was intergenerational singing competition. Some of the other community service projects we do is a blood drive. We've done this in prior years, again, this is before COVID, but we could just offer a community service project, but the kids have to be behind it, so we have to structure it. So what they do is they come up with, all right, we're offering this blood drive, but now how do you get other people to come in to donate blood? So what they did is they came up the idea of getting businesses to donate coupons or discounts or, or gift cards or however. So the kids right there in the corner, they actually had, you know, so when you come in and you donate a pint, you get a raffle card. So then they raffle those off to those who donated blood and that was that. And that was one of our girls, and she was actually about to graduate, so she was 18 and was able to give blood. We did clothing drives as well. And part of the process in doing the clothing drives too, again, you know, they have to understand the process from soup to nuts. It's not like, let's just get them clothes and donate it. You know, so what they had to do is we, you know, they understood why they were doing it and what happens to the clothes once they donate it. Savers is where we bought the clothing too, and they actually had a whole educational program. So that we went into Savers and the woman was telling them about what happens to the clothes. So the clothes that they can't repurpose, they can't clean, they actually still use. They actually pack up and they send to another country and then they, they disassemble those clothing and they put it back into a, you know, into a form they could actually utilize. We've done, worked with Head Start in Southampton. So annually, we also do a tour drive around the holidays. And we put it forward that anybody willing to donate, and we've gotten a lot of people here in town hall, a lot of employees who've donated gifts and a lot of departments get together, they buy bicycles, so that's really been great. And it helps them feel good that they're actually doing something. So, and we've done adopt the families before where we, families come to us or we know families that we've worked with and anonymously, you know, we assign them, you know, we have that angel tree that's downstairs outside CRC office for, you know, a small girl that's, that's five or a boy that's, that's this age. And then everybody dies and gives. This year, we did one family and then we also decided to utilize the kids from Head Start to actually do that. So they were really grateful for that. And then our Youth Advisory Committee, again, in the corner, they're wrapping all the gifts up and they also participated in boy gifts too. So some of the other projects, this is one of the community service projects that we were doing. So as you know, we are in the basement at the Flanders Community Center, lower level. So the basement, it's a nice space, but the entrance way, if you see on the left, was pretty bleak and it wasn't inviting. So we were trying to figure out, well, how do we make it more inviting? Because we are the youth bureau, we want to make, you know, kids feel welcome coming down there. So we presented this to Youth Advisory Committee. So they came up with some ideas, they figured out, you know, they plotted out some suggestions, that's them working on it, and they decided to come up with a mural. And this is them painting it, they mixed the paints together, you know, you could see them transforming, and that is the end product over there. So that was a great job that they did.
Built a slide.
Yeah, then the staff would've used the slide and, you know, it would've been difficult trying to get them back to their desk.
You could've played with perspective too. I think that's very cool.
Yeah, yeah, as compared to the first bleak white picture, it's definitely worked out.
No, but that's an excellent idea to paint it.
Yeah. So, and actually going forward, so what we do hope to do, speak about Yak, the Youth Advisory Committee this coming fall, is to continue projects like this. So again, in the community center, in the back space behind the building is just a dead space. No grass grows very well, that the, you know, it's just there, whatever. So we're hoping that we could come up with a project that they could do that actually makes it more inviting to use that space because we do use it for the younger kids, the elementary age to run around that area. So hopefully that project will happen this fall as well.
And you have the upstairs there too.
Yeah, we do, and the upstairs is a great space. But then on a nice day and you want to get the kids outside playing a sport, you know, that's a good area to use. So one of the projects we did, we actually had a, the Moroccan Youth Council, so we actually teamed up with them in Morocco and we actually Skype them at that point, I think it was before Zoom, before Zoom was popular. And what they did is they spoke about what their youth council is and the project that they're working on in Morocco, and we spoke about what life was like here in the Hamptons. And we kind of exchanged ideas. We exchanged, if you could see, again, they prepared for that. Over next to the TV set, we listed out some objectives that they wanted to ask and get to, that they, you know, looked professional when they were speaking to them.
And you had mentioned that there's another connection coming up with a different country.
Oh, there is, exactly. So my wife and I took a vacation a couple of years ago and there's this gentleman that was doing youth programs down in one of the islands and I've.
Jamaica.
It was Jamaica, okay. Right, okay. So then I'm going to get in touch with him this fall, I hope to, and strike up a relationship with him because he actually gave me his business card and what they do. He actually flies back and forth to New York occasionally. So in addition to, again, the other community service projects, we have guest speakers that come in, like I mentioned. You know, and Tommy John, thank you, you came in a couple of years ago, you spoke to the youth about youth and government and how the legislation process works. And I think there were some challenging questions they gave you, but you handled them really well about political parties and.
Sure.
I remember you responded well to that. We also have the retreat that came in and did a project in your shoes or in her shoes. And this is a curriculum where it puts the participants in a story. And what they have to do is they have to go and choose what they would do in this story. And each table has a different layout. So if they make a choice, they go to table A. If they make another choice, go to table B. And it kind of brings them through a story of how somebody would live their life in a domestic violence situation. And the story is real. It's actually based on a woman who lost her daughter and on the West Coast. And she brought this out as a national program, the retreat actually bought it and they used it for our kids. And they really do get a lot of that, the conversations that erupt after that activity are pretty intriguing. We also had, I'm trying to, like I said, it's horrible. Who else did we have in? Oh, the Tobacco Action Coalition of Suffolk came in and spoke about prevention. We had a couple of other guest speakers too, from different organizations. Oh, the National Guard came in and spoke about vaping and the hazards of that. So 2020 was difficult for everybody and everything was shut down. But through 2020, we kept our programs going as best as we could. So we, even though the kids were home, they could not get out, we still engaged them through Zoom. So even though the Youth Advisory couldn't meet in person, the kids wanted to meet and a lot, they stuck together and we, we had Zoom meetings and we were still able to be productive, keep them engaged, keep them talking and keep them motivated. And Rick, I think we did the interview through Zoom that year also about the east cleanup.
That might've been the first one.
Yeah, right, with you, thank you. So once a year too, we're, you know, the youth bureau also is partnered with the New York State Association of Youth Bureaus. And they offer a lot of help, a lot of advocacy on what funding is coming down, you know, a lot of information. But once a year, they do a youth summit and they invite youth up to Albany to understand and train through peer leadership. So we've always have a speaker that comes and presents, and I forget what he was presenting on that year, but it's always a different topic. That's the first day that the kids go up there. Then the second day, they, they stay over in a hotel, then we go and we speak to our legislators. So normally, we speak with, of course, Fred Thiel and Mr. Laval, but Mr. Laval usually sends a representative and that's who we always met with in that picture. And they're always very approachable. And what we do and learned after the years.
The New York State Youth Bureau.
Right, and that Tony Palumbo?
Yes, in that one, yep.
Senator.
Yeah, yeah.
Senator.
Yep.
Right, yes, and that was after COVID or during COVID. So right now, I'm actually speaking prior to that, what we've done annually. So what, and, and what we've done also is instead of just walking up there again, it's the preparation of kids, preparing them, because they could be intimidated by, you know, coming in front of their legislatures. So we want to make sure that they're prepared and that they know what they're speaking about. A lot of times what we'll do is we'll get the, New York, the association sends us a copy of, of the preliminary report, the preliminary budget report from the governor. So we'll go through that with the kids and they'll understand what, you know, pick out things from that report about what is being funded and what's not, you know, related to youth causes. So they'll pick out specific things that they say, oh, this should be funded or no, I don't believe in that. And they'll get those prepared and speak to Mr. Thiel or speak to, you know, now Mr. Palumbo about that as well. So we've done that. Then after that, we've usually took a tour of the Capitol Building, which is loaded with its history and they get a lot out of that as well. So again, going back to COVID, so COVID was difficult, but we wanted to keep that momentum going. So they, they did not offer in person in Albany, so instead, we again, we did it through Zoom. And again, you know, Mr. Palumbo and Mr. Thiel were very appreciative, they were very receptive, they really worked well with those youth that were involved. Community arts programs, so one of the, I was mentioning before, a lot of these programs stemmed out of the Youth Advisory Committee, such as we were talking about the graphics, the art competition. So to encourage them too, we've had relationships with the Watermill Center. So one year, we went into the Watermill Center, they, they have an on-residential artist. That specific year, they were talking about facial expression and emotion, and that's why they have bags over their heads, if you could see that. You know, then we also this year worked with Parish Art Museum and they were doing a collaborative painting where they would have one picture, they would paint on it, move it to the next person and kind of keep adding to that. So that was actually something that we took part in as well and taught them about art and that appreciation. So one of the things too about rewards and trips, and I know there was a meeting that Jay, you were suggesting that what kind of rewards do we have for these kids for community service? So we actually do have in place already for a couple of years, when they participate at the end of the year, we offer them, what do you want to do? So a lot of times we go into the city, we do a Broadway show, they, you know, they actually do a fundraiser to actually pay for that. This specific year, we did The Lion King, the pictures that are up there. So they, they wanted to go to The Lion King, but prior to that, we actually scheduled books and workshops. So that before they went in to see the play, they went to a workshop that Disney provided that is run by actors from the actual show. So you could see, that's why he's holding up the little Simba doll and they all participated in that and they kind of like understood, you know, how they need to position themselves on stage and that. Again, through COVID, we couldn't do the city anymore, so we did some beach, beach activities for them at the end of the year. And this is just a list of the picture of all the kids. So that was just the Youth Advisory Committee. So moving on to Teams Views on the News, so this is a new program that we started in September, it's our journalism program. Any questions about the?
I, just one question about sort of science programs and things like that.
Oh, right.
Coming up to that?
We are coming up to that, yeah. We could talk about that as well.
Because you know what's cool, right now, the Artemis rocket's launching on the 29th. It's the beginning of the new lunar program.
Yeah.
Because it's a big deal.
Yeah.
And pretty exciting, so.
No, there's a lot of, every day they're coming out with something new.
Yeah, this is, this is, this is it.
That's great.
Finally, after all this time. So I'm just, I'm personally really excited. I've got a lot of friends, you know, in the program, so.
So I'll speed through this. So this is our journalism program. So again, the journalism program, Teams Views on the News, and again, we, every time we do these programs, we want to make sure that these, the youth are developing skills. And as in journalism, we're teaching them how to develop empathy, you know, interviewing, research, they have to research what they're going to interview about, they have to learn how to report back. We talk about ethics, about fair reporting, you know, and then they also do video production. So this program is unique because what we do, again, we, it's all collaborative work that we do. So we work with Connie Conway and whatever we produce, then we put onto the public access channel as well. And that interview that we did with you, Rick, we actually did, again, put that together and that was also done through public access. So choosing an assignment, so this is the process, they, they go through the process of choosing in the assignment. We have a, a teacher that comes in, AD, she works with them through that. But one of, some of the things they did this year, we went to the West Hampton Care Center. Again, we worked through activities prior to them, working with the seniors. Another project we did was take back and de-ter, deactivation systems. So this was the medication take back. We worked with Sue Ralph from the Police Department, she talked to, talked to the youth about where to bring your medications through. They did their research part and then they interviewed, so in speaking to Sue Ralph, they discovered a product called Detera. And then Detera, and they realized that it's actually a deactivation system where you don't have to use a medication drop box. So people actually purchase this or they're given this, you put your medication in it, it actually neutralizes it and then you can get rid of it at home. Just throw it away, dispose of it and your medication is not toxic any longer. So the kids were really intrigued by that. So then they met with one of the vice, vice presidents of the company and they interviewed him and he's actually in a retired PD person. So meet the author, they also did something with the Suffolk County Library System. They, it's a fun project, the pizza project is what they, they worked on as well, comparing different pizza places in Hampton Bayes. They did for Incheskes, they kind of did an expose about them because they, they missed out on interviewing.[1598.33] They did Uncle Joe's, that was Uncle Joe that they interviewed, they got a lot out of him, and they did Scott O's as well. Battle of the Bands, so prior to the bands, they interviewed the band's members, and then they went through at the event and actually interviewed the band members, or the people in the bands, and we were working on that as well. So this is, they're talking about the Discovery Club, so this is our science program. So this program is actually pretty versatile, in the sense that we've been doing it primarily at the Flanders Community Center, but we also could take it on the road and actually provide it for other youth organizations and other groups. It is a STEM program, STEM activities, the critical thinking, problem-solving skills, creativity, innovation, hands-on learning, manipulation.
I'm confused, you have, I'm not seeing that right, you have STEAM?
Yes.
That's the new term for it.
It is, so instead of STEM, STEAM.
Okay.
STEAM involves art. So we actually put art into the program, and I'll show you in these pictures why art's involved as well. So we do superhero, our superhero science, so there's three curriculum that I created for this program, and this took a while to create, because initially, we went and looked at the Huntington Youth Bureau, who had a STEM program, and we were like, how can we duplicate this here for us? So we went in, and at first, you know, we were kind of doing it, I was assigned to go up to SYS and kind of do it for them up there, and it didn't really go as well, we didn't have the kids' interests. So since that point, we've been, I've been trying to figure out how to get the kids involved, and to get them more engaged, and this is how we've done it, you know, how I figured this was successful, and it does work now. The kids are very excited to be in the program, they don't actually, they're saying, when's the next lesson? I'm sorry, this is the last one. So the three curriculum I created is called superhero science is the first, so we're actually looking at Marvel characters, you know, for example, Spider-Man. You know, if Spider-Man was bit by a spider, then, you know, he has superpowers now, what changed? His DNA must have changed. Well, now you're explaining to the kids, what is DNA? So now they're actually doing projects, learning about DNA, learning about ribosomes, and they're creating like candy DNA molecules. So they learn that. All right, Spider-Man got bit by a spider, he can now create spider webs, how do you, how do we do that? Then they learn about that spider webs are the natural, the strongest known natural structure, you know, in that there is. So we're creating spider webs, so they have styrofoam, so we're learning about poly, I forget what's the, the science term for styrofoam is.
Styrene.
Polystyrene, thank you. So polystyrene, so they're melting out these giant things of polystyrene into this, you know, tiny little cup, right, you know, about the size of that. So what is, and polystyrene is made up mostly of air, so they're learning about how those chemicals make up, so they're the breakdown, and that's the end product, after they melt it down, they get this gooey web-looking stuff. And then that's how Spider-Man could create spider webs. So partially also, so in addition to the three curriculum we made, there, that I made, I always say we, because it's a team effort, we all do it together. There's actually six, because you can't provide the same education for both different grade levels. So we're actually doing it for younger kids from K through four or five, and then from six to eight, you know, they understand more. So we did, when we were talking about superhero science, for the younger kids, we had them create like uniforms or create super suits. And from that, we talk about, well, how does this relate to real life? And it relates to real life in the sense that they are, you know, like fireman outfits, they have to be, you know, heat tolerant, or, you know, or police uniforms, or something else, you know, bulletproof vests. Then the older kids actually built a bridge, and I always forget the name of that bridge, is the Da Vinci Bridge. So they learn about Da Vinci, about art, they learn about how Da Vinci also was an entrepreneur and an engineer, and he was able to build these bridges that are really put together without nails or glue, they're just basically friction is what holds them together. So they built a bridge in the community center, and that's De La climbing over the bridge.
Tracy, maybe we could talk about how we partnered with the Bridgehampton Care Center this summer and the spring?
Yes.
And then kind of move through to broader horizons.
Okay, so, oh, so, okay, so then this is actually a good segue into that. So search and rescue is another one, kind of teaching them about history, so we kind of compare this made-up character aerial view, you know, to Amelia Earhart, you know, and we go over her story. So this program was actually provided to the Bridgehampton Childcare Center. So they brought their kids up to the Flanders Community Center over the spring break week, and we were working with them. So that relationship continued into the summer, so now, this past summer, we worked through them, also kind of doing another science program with them as well, and we actually did the space program with the Bridgehampton Childcare Center. And it was their summer camp program, so we had a couple of kids, not a couple, a lot of kids, that actually came up from Bridgehampton for that. More space exploration, learning about the sun, how long it takes for a photon to go from the center of the sun out to the, out to the mid, the edge of the sun. The kids are surprised, it actually takes 5,000 years, and then from the sun to earth only takes eight minutes. We talk more about the space exploration, building volcanoes like on Venus, life on other planets, so if we were to land on Mars, how would that look? They build spaceships, then we need to create electricity, they, through solar power or through using apples or however. So now we're working, stemming into broader horizons. So broader horizons is another program that we've been doing, that I've been doing since I started, actually. So what it is, is a paid internship program that we provide for youth between the ages of 14 to 17. So youth who have little or no job experiences, we offer them this opportunity to come in through broader horizons. Broader Horizons, they go through a training program first, so once they get invited to the program, and we don't pick every kid that comes into the program, because we just get flooded with way too many youth who want to do this. So usually, my funding only allows me, through the county and through the town funding, I'm only able to get maybe 15 at the most per year. So, so what happens is, I have to interview those kids, those kids that are more mature, that are ready to come into the program, we invite into the program. Youth who are not, who say, well, you know, my mom is making me do this, well, they're not invited. So once they are invited into the program, we go through a classroom-type training, and the curriculum here is to give them job skills. So again, what youth really wants to be on a summer afternoon, be sitting in a classroom setting, learning about finances, not many do. So over the years, what I've learned is that you kind of have to make it very interactive for them. So what we do, and they really enjoy that, so they enjoy learning through games, they enjoy learning through, you know, being interactive. So broader horizons, so we have, if you see on the left picture, we talk about appropriate clothing. So they're given a whole bunch of different clothing that they have to choose from, they're giving scenarios, what if you're going for a job interview, you know, at Splish Splash, what would you wear? Would you wear the same thing as if you were going to an office? So they have to like come up quickly with what they would wear for that. Then we do, of course, a mock interviewing, also about, you know, personal body language, about handshakes, about how to go through that as well. You know, and we give them a survey at the end of the program to revert back of how the program has been doing, and they actually say a lot of great things about the training, they're like, I can't believe how much I've learned, so that's been very positive. Our collaborations, so to have this program happen, we have a variety of, oh, actually, before we do that, so we have also to help out with the training, prior to COVID, we worked with Riverhead Building Supply. So Riverhead Building Supply would invite us in, they'd get a tour of their manufacturing facility, so they would learn how a piece of wood or a tree is turned into a desk. Then we would go over to the corporate office, and from there, we would, they would learn how their corporation is set up, you know, how they have a board, they, how they have, you know, people doing different jobs, they would meet with the head of HR, and she would tell them what the expectations are, you know, in working with a company like that. And then we'd be invited to work, to go to a retail store to find out how those products are sold. So from soup to nuts, Riverhead Building Supply showed the kids really what's involved in a large company like that. Our collaborations, again, where the kids are placed, so once they go through that training, they're actually start a work site, they work 20 hours a week, and they get paid for six weeks out of the summer. So some of the places we worked with, the senior services, where the youth are helped with out, with nutrition, they set up, they clean up. We had kids working in, with the clerk's office, with Sunday's office, doing records management. We had the wildlife, they are, Mud Day, the kids get involved, and they're actually working as camp counselors, that's awesome for them. Again, we've worked with the Bridgehampton Childcare Center. Our other collaborations, the East End Food Market, you know, is a new one we've been working with recently, and they, the kids are preparing foods, they're understanding what goes into that. The Southampton Fresh Air Home, I'll talk briefly about that. So that's actually, a lot of times, it's also sometimes pushing the kids into something that they, you know, they don't know if, how they want to do it. So I'm offering to them, like, I don't really know how I want to do that, or maybe I don't want to do that, and I encourage them, try this, try to see how it works. The Fresh Air Homes have been very successful, a couple of interns, where at the end of their summer, they were like, I can't believe, you know, how those kids were so, you know, so great to work with. The youth, the Fresh Air Home, if you're not familiar with it, you know, disabled youth, and that's really what they work with. But by the end of the summer, this girl, Carly, she actually wants to be a neurologist, and that's why she chose, you know, I was encouraging her to do this, and at the end of the summer, she was like, I want to go back there, I loved it so much. And of course, CME, as well as one of the other places we've worked with. Okay.
My turn. So another program that we have that will be starting in the fall again is Youth in Government, and if you're not familiar with the program, it's YMCA is, it's a nationwide program that's, provides a model government experience, and we take kids up to Albany each year for a conference. I know right now, we're sort of adapting the program in a little bit of a different way, and we're looking to have the schools take ownership of it and start their own youth in government clubs. So right now, we're working with West Hampton Middle School for them to start their own, and I know Tommy John has been instrumental with that, and has really been our lead liaison for that program. Is there anything else you wanted to sort of add to that?
You did a very good job at describing it, it is a national program. This collects all the government wonks throughout the state of New York and puts them together, and they, they debate laws on the floor of the Assembly or the Senate, depending on their assignment. And like you said, we are expanding it to include middle school, this is predominantly a high school program, there is a lot of room for growth in this program as well. Particularly proud of one of our students, actually, all of our students who do this, it's really quite an accomplishment. It's one of these transitional programs for people, but young people. And last year, one of our students was named state comptroller, and he actually interviewed the actual comptroller, and that student, Aiden Chenender, actually won best debater in the Senate, you know, so this is out of 750 kids, so it was, we did well, and we're going to be continuing it.
Great, thank you. Another program that we have, which will be starting our training again in the fall, is our Youth Court Program, which you're very familiar with, I'm sure, and thank you to Cindy and Rick for coming to our swearing-in ceremony. The great thing about this is that we have a very, very close partnership with the Southampton Town Police, and they are instrumental in providing training for them, we get to go on a jail tour, they provide us with referrals. So one of the aspects of it is, it's all about restorative justice, and it's really early intervention to get these kids on a better path before, you know, they are tried as adults. So the Southampton Town Police, one of the parts of their disposition that the kids have, sometimes they're recommended to have a mock arrest, which the police officers say, and it's, you know, it could be a little intimidating, but we want them to go through it in this, you know, venue rather than the real thing. So a student can be actually placed in handcuffs, they're put in the back of, of the police vehicle, the parent has to be present, they do a little tour around, and then they're brought and they're put into the jail cell. And then they come out, and the police officers do a very good job in talking with them and saying, okay, so this is what we want to really avoid, how'd you feel about that? And, you know, most of them are like, I, this was terrible, I never want to have to really go through this. So it's sort of a scared straight program, but very, very effective and very powerful. So we had, we work with Kevin Gilvery, and we have students that have been through the program, and then it's been so impactful to them that they come back, and they volunteer with us to do the training. They, we have kids that just graduated this year and that are staying home, and they're like, you know, don't forget about me, if you need a judge, if you need anybody to help with the training, so, you know, they, they want to stay with it. So we're really proud of this program, it's terrific. Summer programs, so I just said, we just finished up, get a little breather before the fall. So Creative Arts Summer Camp, it's the first time we've, we've kind of done it this way, where we had, each week was a different artist in residence that came in and exposed the kids to all different types of art programs, from puppetry to, you can move forward, Tracy, puppetry to, we had a juggler, we had, we had somebody coming in to do an intro to Shakespeare, so they made swords, they talked about, you know, swordplay, we had a carnival day, but we just had, it was really great, because we did a, we typically focus on middle school age for this, but this year, we had a lot of requests from parents of younger kids. So we did a multi-age camp with kindergarten through eighth grade, and it was sort of an experiment, we said, well, you know, I'm not sure how this is going to work out, but it worked out terrific. The older kids really teamed up and were mentors to the younger ones, and we had a great time, it was, the counselors learned so much, and they said they couldn't believe how much the kids grew for the summer, and I was all hands on deck, I was up there all the time and participated, I got to do the cotton candy machine one day, so we had a really fun, fun summer, it was great. Choose's on the Go is just another great opportunity we provide for kids to kind of get out of their small little town. So we bring them on trips, we had a really good response this year, we had to hire another bus, because we had a waiting list. They went up to the adventure park, if you're not familiar with that, it's a high ropes course, it's a lot of team building activities, could be a little scary, I was happy to not have to go on that one, I'm not a fan of heights, but the kids love it. They went canoeing on the Beconic River, you know, swan encounters this year, I've been told, so that was a positive. There is a rock climbing trip, Splish Splash, so, you know, we kind of, we ask the kids, what are you interested in doing, and we provide that opportunity for them. We also do a pool night, where we are busing the kids from Flanders Center up to SYS, so parents don't necessarily have that opportunity to take them to the beach or to the pool, and so we provide that. Teen nights also, that's a Loveham Park basketball program, where we have, you can move ahead, Tracy. We have a Coach Rodney that does a great basketball camp with them, we have a DJ, it's a really fun atmosphere, takes place in Loveham Park in a neighborhood, we have a lot of the neighborhood kids come out for that program. And Coach Rodney also does another basketball clinic for us at SYS and at Phillips Avenue, and he's very instrumental, we did a three-on-three basketball tournament this year at SYS, which we got a great response for. He made the mistake of having me be one of the scorekeepers, of which I know nothing about basketball, so going to have to go for a training session next year before that one. Parents were saying, I don't understand, I thought they had more points, I'm like, oh, it's not one point per shot? Oh. So Lynn needs a little scoring on that. Open mic night is more my speed, as you may or may not know, I'm a vocalist on the side, so this is, I'm all about the music programs. So this is great, we get to partner with local businesses, we've had a Hampton Coffee Company, some of the local burger places, this is at Good Ground Park, so the kids, you know, we want to provide a variety of experience, you have kids that are really into science, you have kids that are really into sports, you have kids that are into performing, so as the Youth Bureau, we provide those, you know, multitude of activities for them. And many, many special events that we provide. Jay was at the Battle of the Bands this year, which was one of our bigger ones, that Peter Strecker, you can move ahead, Peter Strecker, our community relations.
Rick was there too.
Yep, yes, and Rick, yep, yep. And so we had, you can see from the crowd, just a tremendous turnout for that, parents and community members, and lots and lots of kids having a great time. And this is a parade that Tracy is instrumental in, in getting that float set up, and we've been many a year winner for a big, you know, trophy, so that's always a exciting time.
Third place for best float, so.
Creative arts contest, we try to partner with different community entities, and the Parish Art Museum was kind enough to host it this year, beautiful, beautiful space, many, many people showed up for this, we had Kim Laubie from HUGS, who we partnered with, she was our guest speaker, and so we get, you know, the kids the opportunity to present their, their creative arts skills. And this is something that we've had in the past, but the Parish Art Museum was a new space, some, I had never gotten to visit there before, so it was just beautiful, I was really, really impressed with the space, and they want to work again with us in the future.
And it gives the kids some really self-esteem and confidence, here, there, pictures in a real museum, so they get really proud about that.
Again, this is, we had mentioned earlier, the three-on-three basketball tournament, we had, you know, over 100 kids participate, so really popular and positive event. Can you keep going, Tracy?
So, so again, we're finishing up on time, but clinical services, we want to talk about that, you know. So we do programs that are, programs, but most importantly, you know, are our clinical services. So on staff, we do have two full-time social workers, including myself and ZMR, ZMR is a bilingual social worker, and she is actually, she has a certificate in post-traumatic therapy. So we also work with, we have a part-time social workers that are on staff as well, in addition to an intern program. So we work with Delphi, and we work with Stony Brook, the schools, so we'll have them starting in September to work, you know, with some of the referrals we receive. We receive referrals from local schools, from the Southampton PD, from the county, Hope for Youth, or AFI, Ola, and other youth-serving providers. So a lot of what we've been seeing over the past couple of years, of course, anxiety, you know, depression has kind of exploded around COVID and around isolation, we're still working through that, you know, we have a lot of youth who are coming in with a lot of post-traumatic experiences that we're working through as well.
But can I jump in for a second? I think this is a really important service that the town provides, because as you may or may not know, there is just a tremendous waiting list for parents who are looking for treatment for their, for their children, and this is a free service, you know, so we're getting, as you can imagine, as you've read in the paper, you know, post-COVID, the anxiety with youth is just through the roof, as well as depression, so we're able to provide that. It's considered short-term counseling, but we get them in the door, and we, we get the process going, so.
Yeah, and not to be confused, we're not a therapy service, so what we do is, is really about evaluation and short-term counseling. So we'll, we'll meet with them, maybe you have three months, you know, to find out what they need and to move them on to the next, you know, level. Community coal, so we do that, again, a part of the thing, the collaborations we have is we're also liaisons through the Safe and Secure Harbor and the Riverhead CAP, so we work with those coalitions, providing services. Riverhead Community Awareness Program, Say No to the Drugs Mark, so this is just some of the events that Riverhead CAP does as well, some of our community collaborations that we work with pretty closely, East End Partnership for Youth, Family Service League, HUGS, Bridgehampton Childcare, do you want to say anything?
Yeah, just, you can just move to the next slide. So we do have a variety of youth-serving organizations that we closely partner with, many times where the lead on, you know, in that organization. So every year, I'm not sure if you're familiar with this, but we have a youth leadership summit that takes place at Suffolk Community College, and we, we work with schools from both the North Fork and the South Fork, and the town of Southampton is the lead agency on this. And we coordinate this summit where we have just, you know, hundreds of kids that participate, there's different topics each year, we have a guest speaker, they break into smaller groups, and it's a great way for them to meet, you know, students from other schools and to collaborate, and then they take that information, and then they go back to their own schools, and they're the leaders to present this information. We also, this organization, we do professional workshops that we offer to youth-serving agencies within our township. And then just, you know, just so you're aware, we're, you know, we're, as the Youth Bureau, we're involved with all of these other professional organizations each year when they have it, and they're having it again in person this year. The New York State Youth Bureau holds a conference that we attend as well as New York State Youth Court.
So some of, also we partner with local businesses. So real briefly, I want to just talk about this slide as well. So I know there's been some question about, you know, what our statistics are and have we been reaching, you know, a demographic that we need to in the town? So this gives a kind of a summary of how our statistics have been. So starting with 2017, we've reached out, you know, prior to COVID, we were working about a little above 1,400 kids. About 1,500, 2018 and 2019. And then, you know, through COVID 2020, everything shut down, of course. So everything shut down, but we were still, you know, working the best we can, you know, with the staff that we had and with the kids we had. So that year, it was probably about, you know, almost about 600, a little over 600 kids that we've worked with remotely or what we've worked with, you know, providing safety, you know, that they were not in person. 2021, we came back, we started coming back again, things started opening up, you know, our stats have gone up. And as far as 2022 goes, we're probably about a little over 700 now. And by the end of the year, you know, projected will be close to a little under 1,000 kids from this year. So what we do is instrumental to our collaborations and to the youth knowing who we are and developing those personal relationships or engaging them. So you could see prior to COVID, we've had those numbers, but then of course, you know, everything fell apart. So we're slowly building that again up. It's being, it's trusting the community, it's trusting the youth, it's trusting the parents, also developing trust in us as well. So that's something we work hard to do and, you know, we're right on the mark to do that. I want to also just go over some other number, you know, we're talking about.
Tracy, you have a strategy for getting back to the numbers we're at or even get higher than those numbers?
Yeah, so we actually are working, working toward there. You know, the programs that we've been talking about, you know, like Lynn was mentioning, the camp program actually brought a lot more kids in this year than, you know, than we had in the past couple of years. We've been working through, you know, so that's what we're kind of focusing on. But I also want to reiterate too, sure, it's important and it's great to see that we have those numbers, but we've actually been seeing some pretty crazy things happening in this country. And I want to remind you that all it takes is one youth to change the lives of like hundreds of people. You know, so we're talking about school shootings, we're talking about shootings in malls. So the real work happens on that individual basis. So all, again, all it takes is that one life. So what we're doing with this work is, yeah, it's great that we have these numbers, but that handful of kids that really need these services for, you know, that's, that's where we pride ourselves on.
Yeah, Tracy, at the same time, I think a lot of the schools during COVID internalized a lot of those programs and now they're releasing them. The programs are ending, they'll be back under your care pretty soon.
So we have some new, we're still working on the details, but we, you know, we, we listen to what the kids are interested in and then try to provide programming based on that. So we have, you know, people approach us all the time, hey, we'd like to work with you. So we have a chef that wants to come in and provide, you know, how to make culinary, you know, exciting and, and some fresh meals on, on a budget. So that's a, that's a new program that we have working on for the fall. And we're always looking to partner with new people, you know, that's what happened with the summer. We had people contacting us, hey, you know, I'm a juggler, how can I get involved? I'm like, oh, I'm like, hmm. And it all, you know, they all just sort of tied in together and we came up with that theme. And, you know, we had parents calling us saying, this was amazing, you know, there's not a lot of summer camps focusing on the arts. It's all sports, it's all recreation, but this is something that's different and so.
And let's just bring in an awareness out to the, to the schools and to the kids themselves. We're hoping that the schools will allow us to get back in there.
That's a big way to reach them.
We're going to be doing some marketing, we have some, you know, neat little things to pass out to kids, pop sockets and T-shirts and things like that to bring in awareness. And do something like this so that people know what the programs are that the youth bureau offers and, you know, they can, they can look to, so you go, you know, go online and see if, you know, their kids might.
Yeah, so through our Facebook page.
Well, on the, on West Hampton Beach School System on the side, I, I don't know if you guys are with First Robotics and the Robotics Club there.
My daughter's in that.
Yeah, I was in that program for a long time, many, a few years ago. And it's a great program, but it's a national program. That's a perfect place, so, yeah. There's so many of those.
We need to. Yeah, I just want to say thank you to you guys because it was my suggestion that you guys came, because we kind of lose sight of you do such a good job, you don't cause any problems. We don't care. I was happy that you guys came back and, and gave us a go-through of what everything that you do. You did, did not mention the stuff the bus. Are we doing that?
That's coming up. So yeah, so part of the, yes, we are. So the youth advisory board is made above sectors of the community that advise us on sort of projects that they would like to see happen. So we are, we're going to be working on doing a project in the fall where we're going to do a stuff a bus program. And the Maureen Saban will be the recipients of, of all of the food that is collected. So that's one of the projects we do have coming up.
I, I, one quick question about a swimming pool. You were taking kids from Flanders to SYS?
So we provide, yeah, we provide the transportation.
Okay, have you at all engaged with the Suffolk County Community College?
We have, actually, a couple of years ago.
Because we're having some issues there. This pool was put out here for a lot for, for the municipalities to use and local residents and it's not getting as used in those ways.
Their costs were a little bit too high for us to actually take on for the program. That's why we didn't utilize.
Let's, let's talk about that, okay? Because I, you know, with the community center, the idea is we're going to be helping seniors, we're going to be busing seniors to that pool.
Sounds like a good partnership that we can talk about.
Yeah.
You said to talk to the county about giving us a.
A deal.
Yeah, it's, it's been difficult.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, and as Cara mentioned about outreach, so we do a lot of that. And as come September, we'll be pushing to the schools, but if anybody is interested in more information, we do have a website. Oh, and the number's not on there, but 631-702-2425, you know. And Peter Strecker, he is our foundation in the youth bureau. He does, he answers the calls, does the outreach, he's amazing. So you, you might get Peter and he'll return your call.
They also have a great rock climbing wall up there.
Yeah, they have a great gym, there's a lot of stuff there. And, you know, part of all support of it was that we would have access. We can't get our lifeguards to go to get training and local, you know, our infrastructure, our community centers are locally, we're supposed to be able to be certified that, so.
Yeah.
So that's a battle.
I would like to, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to our next topic. Sorry, we're.
Thanks, guys.
Fifteen minutes behind schedule. We have Lisa Gori, our sole assessor, to discuss new tax law exemptions proposed for seniors to disabled and first-time homebuyers.
Hello, Lisa.
Good afternoon.
Morning.
How's everybody?
Good.
Hello.
This is my deputy assessor, Jim Perini. I think everyone's.
Jim, how do you spell your last name?
P R I N I.
All right, so.
Renee.
I will hand those out. All right, so this is in regard to a couple of exemptions that have been in existence. The town has adopted these exemptions previously. However, very recently, the governor has just signed into, into law some new legislation just to update a couple of these exemptions. The first one is the, the first-time homebuyer exemption. And this is for anyone who's purchasing a home in the town of Southampton for the very first time. They cannot have previously owned, you know, been a homeowner in the town of Southampton and I believe probably any, anywhere else in the state. And they also have to fit into the income guidelines, which by law we have to follow the, the SONI May income and purchase price guidelines, which at this time, I believe I had attached to the last page what those guidelines are for Suffolk County. For a one and two person, the income limit is 100, just below 140,000 and the purchase price is about $800,000. So what this new legislation does is it actually, it extends the expiration date. This exemption was set to expire December 31st of 2022. So the governor actually just extended it to December of 2028.
Sorry, Lisa, what are they exempted from?
So the, what it is, they are exempt from 50% of the assessed value in their first year that they're granted the exemption. And then the exemption is for five years and then it decreases by 10% for each year. Unfortunately, we only have a handful of applicants at this time that are actually qualified for the exemption.
Which makes sense because with the income limits, they're not buying it in the town of Southampton.
That's true.
So it's not possible to, it works in other areas, but not so much.
Yeah.
But, all right, so it's the first year that, oh, it's 50% and 40% reduction, 30%, 20%, 10%.
This is enabling legislation from the state and the town needs to put code on to support this.
Yes, to, to extend the deadline.
So it'll extend the deadline.
Yes.
Now, I guess it's possible that there may be some candidate to, you know, with down payment assistance or maybe more when we have the Housing Opportunities Fund.
Right.
Where we can provide either no or low interest loans or take equity interest in, in these properties, that there might be more people who then will qualify for this first-time homebuyers exemption.
Right, and it has to be a first-time homebuyer of a newly constructed residence. So it can't have been, yeah, it has to be a newly, or.
Brand-new home, that makes sense.
Brand-new home, or. Or it could be a home that was previously existing, but you, in your contract to purchase the home, you have to have an agreement that within 90 days, you're going to do renovations on the house that, and the renovations have to exceed, I think it's $3,000. But they have to be started within 90 days of the purchase date, so that's. So that, yeah.
That takes the foreclosed property, so now we have access to.
Okay, so that, so this is something we already have passed.
This is already in the town code.
We just have to change the date?
Extend the deadline.
All right, is Tommy John, is something you're going to introduce?
Yeah, we're going to be bringing this forward and the next one that Lisa is going to be presenting.
Okay. All right, so the next one, which the town also has in, in the town code is the senior citizen and disabled persons with limited income. The governor also just signed into legislation to update the income limit to $50,000. Previously, the income limit, the base, the base income started at 29,000 and that had not been updated since 2009. Previous to that, the state had, you know, updated the income annually by, you know, 1,000, $1,500. So just, you know, for about 13 years or so, this, the income limit had not been, you know, had not been updated.
That's interesting.
I'm sorry, this is, this is the income limit for the enhanced star or?
No, the, the enhanced star is something different. The income limit for the enhanced star, that is 93,000, so.
What's this, the 50,000?
So this is for seniors, this is for the senior citizens. So there, there are actually two exemptions that senior citizens can qualify for. It's this one where their income can be anywhere between zero, the base is 50,000, but then at 50,000, you're granted 50% reduction off your assessed value. And then it's a sliding scale fee down to 5%. And I believe the 5% income is like, you can't make any more than 58,400. The enhanced exemption is for those people that make over that 50,000, but not more than 93,000. So that's in addition to this exemption. Now.
And the enhanced is not, that's only just seniors, right?
The enhanced, well, the enhanced is just seniors. The star, there's a star basic, which is for anyone, as long as it's your primary residence. And then the star enhanced is for senior citizens.
Can you stack exemptions?
You can't get, you can't get both, you can get either or.
Does the star, they have to file every year for the star or they file once and?
You file once and, and then it's granted, only if your income changes, which the state will notify us whether or not, you know, they still fit the requirement.
I think if you make.
But that's 50 to 93.
Yes. Now, the only thing with this exemption is, excuse me, I've reached out to the school districts and the villages to let them know that we still have information coming in from the state. Subsequent to my meeting with you, Tommy John, I got an email from, you know, the assessors throughout, you know, the county and also from our regional manager from the state that there was some, some information that was still coming in. So what it is, municipalities and school districts can actually increase the baseline anywhere from the previous baseline of 29,000 to the 50,000. So it's not an automatic, we have to adopt 50,000, it's anywhere in between. So I let the school districts and the villagers know that, you know, not to do anything yet until we get all the information in from the state. I also spoke to the real property director at the county, Dennis Brown, who the county definitely has intentions of, of adopting the exemption, but they're still, you know, getting information from the state as well. And once they have everything, you know, to make a well-informed decision, they will adopt a limit. They're not sure whether it's going to start at the baseline of 50, but.
Do the school districts have to separately vote to opt in?
They do. Each school district has, has to vote as well.
It's possible that we could do.
Villages also have to.
So I asked this question as well, Jay. This would cover the town of Southampton and all of our special districts and, including fire districts.
Correct.
But not the school.
But not the schools and not the villages.
Right, they adopt their own.
They would have, right.
Yes. So, you know, of course, we want to do what's in the best interest, you know, of our taxpayers. But I'm just hoping that, you know, between the, the county and the town and the school, that everyone's, you know, sort of on the same page. And hopefully we can, you know, together adopt, you know, the same limits. Otherwise, it makes it kind of confusing for the taxpayers because they could potentially get, you know, a 50% on the town and maybe only getting 45% on the county and then, you know, a different percentage on the school. So that's, you know, you know, that's why we're still waiting, you know, to get the final, you know, say-so from the state on how to administer this exemption so that, you know, we give the right information.
We could go, we could go ahead and, and do, give the maximum exemption based on this right now.
What I, what I gave you in here is the maximum, but I just wanted to let you know that.
It could be less if we wanted to.
Yes.
But how do you, who makes the determination, like non-taxable gains and things like that, you know, to develop that income? That's.
Well, the, the law actually has, it has guidelines that we have to follow, the income that we can and cannot include.
So we, we have to do it here?
Yes, we do it in-house. We do it, we, we do it in-house. So we take in the applications, we take in their income tax returns, social security, interest, whatever they receive, retirement. And then, you know, we, we follow the guidelines, you know, from the state as to what we can count, capital gains, IRAs, all of that, you know.
Need an accountant too.
Yeah, it's a lot of.
It's a lot, and I have one person that does this. So right now, we have 900 and, we have about 965 people that are getting the senior citizen exemption. About 60 people are getting the disabled exemption. So, you know, anyone who's currently receiving a 5% could potentially jump to 50%. And then those people that were denied last year that just missed the income threshold, they would qualify this year, you know.
Or change any one of the deductive statuses, you know.
Right.
Coming down from, wow.
Yeah, so it, yeah, I mean, it, it's a big jump. Like I said, the, the, the limit has not been changed, you know, over the last 13 years, so now to, you know.
So this is a straight, if you qualify for this, it's 50% reduction?
Depending on what your, what, what the income threshold is. So if you're at, you know, zero to 50, zero to 50,000, then you're entitled to 50%. If you're, you know, at, you know, 58,300, then you would get the 5% reduction off your assessed value.
Is there a cap on that?
It's 58,400.
58,000. And right now, we have to adopt that, right now it's 29 in our code?
The, the maximum currently right now is anywhere between 29,000 to 37,400.
37 is that 5%?
That's, that's the 5% currently, yes.
And there's no in-between, you go, either go 50% or 5%?
It does amortize down.
Yeah, it's also a sliding scale, so it goes 50, 45, 40, it goes down.
But you still have to.
Down to five.
You still have to calculate that.
We still have.
So we started at 40.
So you said, how many people currently qualify with that 29,000 threshold?
We have nine, we have about 960 residents in the town that currently get it. I don't know how many people would qualify, we.
So more people would, I'm sure a lot more people would qualify, but, but this is only seniors and disabled, so.
You have to be 65 and older, yes.
You may have some other residents who aren't seniors or disabled.
Correct.
Who the burden will now shift to them, they'll have to pay slightly higher taxes.
Yes.
Even though they're in this income.
Right.
So there's going to be a negative impact as well.
Right, the burden would shift to those other taxpayers, yes. So I, you know, I, some of the school districts have already reached out to me, you know, they want to know, you know, how many citizens in their school district currently have the exemption, what their percentage is. So, you know, that, they have to, you know, take in all that information.
And they can't do it unless we do it.
Excuse me?
Can the school districts do it on their own or do they need the town of Southampton to, to institute?
They can do it on their own.
They can.
Yeah.
It would just be nice to get a uniform.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's what I'm hoping.
It's using enough as it is, the way it's set up, so adding that on top.
Do you want us to wait and see what some of the other entities are doing?
I would recommend that we wait at least to see what the county is doing, once the county then adopts it or at least we know, you know, what they're, we know that they're intending to adopt it, I just don't know at what level.
Just a small portion of the property taxes, but.
But we don't know what they're, what they're going to adopt.
Right, we don't know what they're going to adopt yet. Now, we usually send out our senior citizen renewal notices in November. So hopefully by then, we'll have an idea of what the county is doing.
We should have it by November.
Yeah, I, I hope so, yeah.
This is something we can, we can act on. You know, there are 57,000 parcels in the town, you know, and we're talking about 960 people. Probably doubling, just.
Right, yeah, that, that number could possibly double.
This is income only.
This is based on your income and you have to be 65.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. But, but we don't.
Or disabled, yes. Or disabled.
You know, and that's a big, to cut your assessed valuation in half, that's a big reduction. So, we just would wanna know the impact to some, it's not just getting spread out among, it is getting spread out among the other taxpayers, but within that set of other taxpayers, or some people who can't afford to have their taxes go up. That's, that's my concern, that it, certainly those people who, let's say, make forty thousand dollars of, you know, forty-five thousand dollars, it's, this is great. The property taxes will get cut in half.
It's gonna be potentially, I mean, it's not really on, on our side, I don't see it making a huge debt, you know, a huge dent in people's taxes either way. But on the school side, I mean, there's communities like my community of East Quogue, where there's gonna be a lot of people qualifying for this if you, you know, nearly double the rate. And it's gonna shift that burden to a lot of families that really can't afford the extra money.
Because if you're making seventy thousand, you're in a hard time, too.
Or you're sixty-two.
Sixty-two, yeah, you're gonna see your taxes go up a little bit.
It's gonna be a hard call for the school districts.
A little bit.
Yeah.
It's, it's not easy. It would be nice to have that sort of data, how many more people would qualify. Sometimes, just like leave well enough alone, don't change it. Or, but we can pick a number, so maybe we adjust, you know, the twenty-nine thousand for the value of the dollar. Maybe that becomes thirty-five thousand or forty thousand, and we don't go all the way up to fifty. I don't know, without having data to look at, to know how it's gonna affect somebody who makes, let's say, sixty thousand dollars.
I really wanna see what the.
How much is their tax, school tax going up? How much is their property taxes going up because we did this?
Yeah, there's an unforeseen consequence here without having that data to make.
Yeah.
For me, at least, to make an informed decision.
Right.
Well, you can adjust it through the years. We could try a baby step first and see how it impacts, how many more people.
Yeah, 'cause we have no idea how many people are gonna, you know, gonna apply for it, and then, you know, maybe eligible, you know, we have.
We could do some work with the census tracts, the census data to, to, you know, cross-reference income and age.
We know, we do know that a lot of, like, hard-working people have left this area because of the cost of living. And, you know, when they sell, they tend to become summer homes, retirement homes, and not homes for working people.
And there's nothing steady about our demographics.
I would hate to do anything that would exacerbate that. But at the same time, I wanna help people at the bottom as well who really need the relief. So, it's unfortunate that you, you know, can't, we can't find a way for some of those other non-seniors at low income to. I mean, what do they consider a senior, sixty-five?
Sixty-five for the, for the exemption, yeah.
Yeah, the relief is gonna come on the school district side. And I'm, I'm hoping that our local superintendents are having these discussions, and they understand, and I don't know if you've reached out to them, to, to, they understand.
Oh, yeah, I reached, yeah, I reached out to them.
What it is, if they don't all come to kind of a consensus. Because on their end, too, you know, if you have a district that says, okay, we're gonna give the fifty percent, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna elevate it to fifty percent, and then you have the, the neighboring district say, well, we're gonna stick at thirty, you're gonna have some community members at your Board of Ed meeting that are gonna be really upset.
Yeah, inconsistency is a really serious.
Yeah, I mean, I wish, I almost wish the, the state had just set the.
Just set the amount, so this is it, and not give the option of here or there, yeah.
We're trying to come up with some ways to help some of those other folks, like the homestead exemption, which we don't have still.
No, we still, yeah.
And the phase in of the market trend, we don't have.
No.
I think Fred was looking for some information from you, and don't know that he's got everything he needs.
No.
So, he wanted to see some impact.
Right, yeah. No, we weren't, I wasn't able to, to finalize it. But for, for now, you know, unless the town goes back to doing reassessments, that wouldn't even, it, it wouldn't even.
We're so far off right now, right?
Yeah, we just, well, we got our official equalization rate from the state, came in yesterday. They did confirm seventy-nine percent, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's not terrible. So, our assessments, on average, are twenty-one percent below. What true value, on average?
Yeah.
Yeah, on average, that's the problem.
Some areas are probably.
Some more.
Yeah, some areas are fifty percent below, some, you know.
You know, I mean, this is a real, this is gonna be a really big challenge for the town board itself, particularly if we find out that, you know, some areas are now fifty percent below, and some areas are only ten percent below. If we unfreeze it, and we go back to market trend, it's gonna be a lot of unhappy people. That's, we're creating a, it's getting harder and harder to get back because of the rapid acceleration in the real estate market. You would think interest rates and things like that going up, and the economy, maybe prices would come down, but we haven't really seen prices.
Yeah, the, the volume of sales over the past year is down about thirty-one percent.
Oh, that's big.
Okay, I think we had, at the height, twenty-two hundred sales. Last year, we had fifteen hundred.
But they're still skewed to higher.
The prices haven't fallen, 'cause there's still some supply left. And like you said, with the market, the Fed hikes, inflation, the market's gonna come down, it's just a matter of when.
Yeah.
And how drastically. You know, with midterms coming up, usually the market kinda holds.
Well, inflation is sort of keeping the prices high.
Right.
Too, because if you have a million-dollar house, it's also, the inflation's like nine percent.
Right.
You know, the cost to build that house is now higher, so the.
Naturally, which has an impact.
And I noticed, too, a lot of transactions over the past years was people just putting the name of their homes into an LLC.
LLCs.
For obvious reasons.
Close to thirty percent of our.
Right, so.
Yeah.
It's odd that, you know, inflation is higher than the interest rates. So, it, sort of, it, it sort of makes sense. It supports then the higher interest rates because the asset you're buying is inflating in value at like nine percent, and you're paying six percent. It's a really odd time.
Yes.
You know, whereas you have these odd curves or inverted, and, well, we'll see what happens, but.
What I see happening is, usually before COVID, we were averaging around twelve hundred sales per year. We were at fifteen hundred this year. I think it's gonna kind of find its way back to that twelve hundred. Prices will still be higher than where they were three or four years ago, but the volume's definitely gonna come down, and.
We just don't have the housing stock.
What's that?
The housing stock is, it's been spent, I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
I think, I think.
Somebody can make money.
So, I mean, I know.
I think the rental market is softing, too, and that's gonna affect things because people who buy these investment properties and, you know, count on that income from rental to cover their carrying costs, we're gonna find that they can't cover it anymore, and they're gonna wanna unload those assets, and that's gonna affect the real estate value. We'll see. I, I never yet, even in like two thousand seven, two thousand eight, at best, the real estate market out here flattened. I've never seen it go down, but I can think of, it's always, it's the best investment is real estate in the Hamptons over time. You know, years where it went up by twenty percent.
Oh, you have different forms of rental income, too.
But, the one thing I will say.
Those things don't constantly go up. At some point, they degrade, yeah.
So, this particular legislation, or this particular program that the state allows us to do, is really, it's focused at disabled people and our senior citizens, and I think they are particularly hurting in this economy for the reasons that you, you are saying. And we're gonna take a look at this and try to come up with some numbers to see how many people will be eligible, whether or not they take advantage of it.
I think we should adjust that twenty-nine thousand.
Oh, sure.
It's just too low.
It hasn't been adjusted since two thousand and nine, so.
That's like federal poverty level.
Yeah, we put that into.
I mean, it's.
Yeah, that's below.
I, I, I think we have to lift it. The question is, how high do we lift it?
I think we have to see where the school districts.
A federal stance is at what, like thirty-four thousand right now, right? Federal at poverty level. That number cramped up, too, because of inflation. So, we're, yeah, it's.
I think we have to, we have to lift it, adjust it for time, or whatever, maybe, maybe even a little higher than a time adjustment. But we just have to sort of get a sense of what the unintended consequences.
Yeah, especially with the school districts, you know, when, do we know when we're gonna get some feedback from, like Hampton Bays and Eastport, who have the higher tax rates?
East Quogue.
You know, East Quogue. Because to really to shift that burden, which is already a burden in those areas.
Yeah.
You know, that's a concern.
It depends if you look at the school portion of the tax bill or the other.
Yeah, just concerned with the school.
I'd be curious to see, from the county's perspective, if they're seeing more tax defaults. I haven't heard that they are, so.
I haven't heard that.
So, these, some of these individuals, when they get stuck, you know, it's, they either gotta not pay their mortgage, not pay their taxes.
It's usually rolled up in a mortgage.
Lenders gotta make sure they pay their taxes.
Yeah.
So, but if they, if they have no mortgage on these properties, which a lot of seniors have now paid them off, that's where you'll see it, in the tax default, is they're two or three years behind in their property taxes. And I, I hate for anybody to lose their home like that.
Especially now, because it's such equity, because the values have been so high. You know, we used to tell that when I was at the county in the real estate department, we'd beg people to try to work with them sometimes, 'cause they'd leave, they'd be leaving sometimes fifty, hundred, two hundred thousand dollars worth of equity, 'cause they wouldn't pay your twenty thousand dollar tax bill.
It's terrible, you have the county, you take your property. It's not like a bank that'll auction it and give you the difference. The county gives you nothing.
Right, yeah.
So, they, they'll take a million-dollar property that's owed twenty thousand dollars and.
Yeah, we had a whole, we have, it was whole.
That's what happened in Houston in the eighties.
I had whole staff to work with people.
Part of the county tax act, I think it's terrible.
Yeah, they'll take it, they'll take it, they'll give you three years to, you know, redeem it back, but then after that, it's like, okay.
We did have the folks, and I know when I was over there, we had my redemption unit, where people, they were almost like social service, but they would try to, we'd try their best to try to work with people.
Commercial property.
Please, try to work with them, and try to even try to get them loans, try to get them taxes, whatever, whatever they could do, so they wouldn't lose their houses.
You get a lot of other protection.
They were really great staff over there.
That you're kinda competing with.
So, I'm sure the school districts are gonna be looking to us as well, you know, we have twelve, thirteen of them.
Yeah, I think right now, everyone's probably waiting to see what the county's gonna do. Because usually the county, you know, they, they usually adopt the exemptions first, you know, when, when there's any changes to them, and then everyone kinda, you know, follows.
Well, have they reached out to local municipalities, the county at all, or do they have a working group there?
Well, I, I reached out, I reached out to, to Dennis Brown last week, and I said, well, you know, this question's gonna come from the rest of the assessors, you know, throughout the county. So, he then sent an email to everyone saying, okay, you know, we're, we're still pulling in information from the state. The, you know, the county, you know, my intention is to definitely adopt it. At what level, we're unsure. So, info, you know, we'll let you know as soon as we know, that's basically, that is the email.
My, my sort of instinct is to, it's like split the baby and, and pick a number like forty thousand dollars, say somewhere between twenty-nine thousand and fifty thousand, and see how that goes, and see how many additional people we get. And if, you know, then maybe consider going up to the full fifty thousand.
Were there, were there people that?
We'd have to do our, our own sort of chart, too, in terms of that, that phase out over that. So, that's for the, let's say forty thousand is the number for fifty percent reduction. And we could probably use the higher number, the fifty-seven thousand for full, and then just have to create, we can create our own steps.
Well, I know what, what I did, I did like a, you know, preliminary based on, so someone going from five percent now, let's say they were saving, you know, nine dollars on the, on the, on the town line, and then going to fifty percent, they would be saving ninety dollars. So, it was a, it was, it was a significant amount.
Yeah, and the school tax is the big one.
School tax is the big one, yes.
If we're like twenty percent of the bill, they're probably like seventy percent of the bill.
Right.
And that's not gonna be our call, that's the school district.
That's the school district, yeah.
So, whatever, whatever the savings in town, figure three or four times that.
What about at the, at the, at the rental levels that we're, you know, what we're talking about here are really disadvantaged folks. Income that's being made either on the, from the voucher programs and other things. I don't even know how that's accounted for tax-wise as income. You know, there, there, there's voucher money that goes into these, into these homes that people are, you know, have to have because they're at this income level, but then they're, they're renting under that law. I, I'm just, you know, I agree with the councilman, there are, you know, and I, I get these calls a lot, and I don't know what to do because we have, you know, we're the Hamptons, and that's great, except within the Hamptons, we have people that are desperately, desperately financially disadvantaged. And we have no way to, you know, things like this are great, but they make it so complicated to enact.
Yeah, it's.
Sorry for ranting, but it's so frustrating.
I have one thing, but Tommy John, I think you're next.
Well, it, what I was saying about our seniors, and currently with nine hundred and sixty people in the program, we're already giving this. But, you know, this is a program that's in place, but it's at smaller numbers that haven't been adjusted. So, the spirit of the law, I, I believe, really needs to be adjusted. So, we'll do some more work on it, come back to the board, and we'll be, you know, putting this forward in some way, paper form in the spring. I could tell you what I think right now.
We had, just have to adopt it before March first of two thousand twenty-three, in order for it to take effect next year. So, we have some time.
There's some time. So, let me ask a question, it may not come out too artful, but we, for, really for the first time now have an equalization rate, and it's based on the average we're talking about. We're, we're at seventy-nine percent our assessed valuation versus the true full value of the town. One of the things that we were sort of curious is whether being at full value was hurting some of the areas that had school districts in two towns, like, like Flanders Riverside, and who now actually may be benefiting, particularly if that averaging is because properties east of the canal or, or further off base. So, have we done any analysis to see whether there's been some benefit to that equalization rate in terms of the taxes in that area?
Well, when, when you had put the reassessment committee together back in two thousand twenty, I think it was, Maureen had actually done a tax impact to look at whether or not there were, to see whether or not Riverhead, our, our constituents in the Riverhead School District were actually paying more. And what she found was that they were actually, they were actually benefiting from being at a hundred percent. Because in two thousand and three, prior to the reassessment, we did have a special equalization rate for those residents because they were not at that time paying their fair share when we were, when we were not at a hundred percent value. So, I don't know whether or not that may come into play again, if we're gonna have to seek a special equalization rate for that school, I mean, for the, for the residents, for the Flanders residents.
Eastport South is another one.
Eastport South Manor, yeah.
And Sag Harbor, too, I think, to a much lesser extent.
Can we try to get a sense of whether not being at full market value might be hurting those, into those properties within those school districts or helping them?
Yeah, the, the state, the state does offer a simulator where I can put in the equalization rate for, you know, Riverhead, Southampton, and Brookhaven Town, and see, you know, whether or not our residents are gonna hurt from not doing a reassessment. So, once Brookhaven receives their, their final equalization rate, then I can actually go into the simulator and see what the impact will be. So, I just have to wait. They haven't gotten their equalization rate yet.
So, and I'm imagining if every property across the town is off by, let's say, twenty percent, it's really not gonna be an impact. The equalization rate will correct it. If those areas are off by more, then it would probably help them. If those areas are off by less, it probably hurts them. But we, I'd have to see the numbers.
Okay. And then.
It's, it's confusing, it's, it's all math, but when you have a school district that's in two different areas, they have to make both areas equal.
Right, equal.
So, they have to multiply on each side to get the full fair market value, so they can then assess and collect proportionally.
Right, so they pay into the tax levy equally.
You know, also raised an issue in the past about school aid, and I've never known the answer there, whether the equalization rate or lack, you know, having a one, now we're not at one, we're at one point two five nine or whatever, whether that is affecting this.
I don't know that, I don't know for sure whether or not it affects those school districts that are not split, you know, with another district, but it definitely does for, you know, Riverhead and Eastport.
Right. So, we just need to do a little more research. It is a big decision, though, for this board to decide either, we're gonna get to a point where there's sort of no going back. We no longer will be able to be a full-value town. And even if we, even if the state gives us the ability to correct by five percent each year, we'll never catch up.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think the state would allow us to do that. It's either you're at a hundred percent.
Well, the state does now allow a three-year phase-in, correct?
With Westchester County, yes, they have an agreement. That's, that's, yeah, that's only, yeah. As far as I know, it's only with Westchester County. They, they do have special legislation that allows them to catch up.
And how many municipalities in Westchester are actually going for a hundred percent evaluation?
That I'm not, that I'm not sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
I know it's a handful statewide.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
I'll just say, you know, for the person who did the hundred percent for seven years before two thousand and nineteen, our assessments were so off that, like you said, there's gonna be no coming back.
Right.
It's like either next year, maybe the year after, otherwise it's done. What you can do is you can do, get everybody at a hundred percent. So, at least they're paying their, what they should be paying. And then you can manipulate whatever the tax rate you want to do. If you think it's twenty percent, then you adjust it that way. At least everybody, their home is at one hundred percent market value. The wealthy aren't getting away with everything to where, that's what I'm seeing now is we're so off on the high end stuff that it's just switching the tax burden. And it's just completely not equitable.
I, I absolutely.
I mean, I, you guys are probably sick of me. I fight for it every time I come in here. It's, I'm probably annoying.
And I agree with you.
But I can't stress, it is so frustrating because I see something that I know is five million dollars off and for the last three years, I, I can't do anything about it.
And, and I'm for one guy who didn't expect us to keep this freeze on for this length of time. Because I didn't expect that to happen.
Because I knew it would be difficult to come off. That's why I was fighting so adamant against it.
And it's growing.
And last year I had half the town done at a hundred percent. I mean, I was gonna be done. And then that's when we decided to go to the equalization and everything else.
Yeah, we froze it.
In nineteen.
Because.
Nineteen.
Some areas were going up so fast and you had people on fixed incomes that couldn't handle that rapid growth in assessed valuation. And we looked for some mechanisms to address it, which we have not gotten. And then we extended it anyway, thinking that maybe we would still get those mechanisms or the market would drop down a little bit, which it has not. So, now we're at seventy-nine percent fair market value. But on some areas, we're probably at fifty percent fair market value.
Even worse sometimes. Yes, it's horrible.
It just, understand.
Completely.
A vote to go back now will mean a year where somebody who thinks they, you know, they look at their property tax, their assessment, they say it's five mil, they have a five million dollar house, but they really have a ten million dollar house and they're gonna see that there's a, you know, a hundred percent increase in their assessed valuation and they're gonna be knocking on your doors. And they're gonna be lining up grieving and it's not gonna be pretty. And also the people with the, you know, a Hampton Bays house where we have it listed as five hundred thousand dollars and it's now one point two million, they're gonna be knocking on your doors when we capture. And Hampton Bays has gone up very quickly in the last few years.
Yeah.
Very, so it's not just east of the canal now. It's other areas.
We would also have to coordinate with the school districts when they set their tax rates. Because if we reassess and the school districts keep their tax rates at what I'm looking at here, nineteen in, in Eastport, South Manor, twelve in Hampton Bays and some of our other districts, we really need to coordinate so they don't get a windfall of extra money that they may in fact not want or need to run their school. So, our fiscal years, we should line them up.
They would have to adjust their tax rate because they're, they still have the two percent cap.
Well, that's my point is that, you know, if, if we reassess and their tax rate is still in the same position that it's in and they adjust them in the springtime, it could be a lag year and.
It's important to note, and I don't know how we.
Adverse, adverse effect on these taxpayers.
Even, even if somebody sees, let's say, a thirty percent increase in their assessment, it doesn't mean their taxes are going up at all. Because there might be other properties that are going up by fifty percent, a hundred percent, their taxes might actually go down, their actual taxes. But when they see that, they're gonna believe that their taxes are gonna go up by thirty percent.
The alternative though is then that the assessments don't mean anything, which it's like either they're correct, then why have an assessing department? You're just gonna throw numbers out there.
Most towns, I mean, most towns are not correct. We're one of the only towns that were at full value.
Well, there's, there's a limit of correction that's important to stay within. And you begin to go outside of that, you have a real serious problem that I think you're talking about because I'm seeing it. Maybe it's, it's not in my head.
It's not in your head.
I'm seeing it.
I believe, I understand. It's completely hard. I get exactly what you're saying. It's just, you know what, we have a chance to be a hundred percent right on something. At least we know that the numbers are correct. And then we can lower the tax rate or do what you guys do, you know, to adjust how much these people are gonna pay in taxes. And like you said.
Well, we don't control the whole tax rate, which is my point. And not only do we not control the entire tax rate, our fiscal years are six months apart. So, that's going to be tricky and we would have to get our school districts to be on board before we do this.
The tax rate is just a multiplier, so.
But to get to an equalization, you can't do it all at once.
We would, you know, in this current budget, if, if we suddenly put everybody at full fair market value, the tax rate would be going down by like twenty or thirty percent. It would be a huge reduction in tax rate. It's, but, but that's just a multiplier. It's not, it's, what people are mostly concerned about is what do they actually pay?
Right.
In taxes. And that's where the problem was because it wasn't going up evenly across the board. It was going up very fast in certain hot neighborhoods. And in some of those hot neighborhoods, you had some people who couldn't afford that, to go up that fast. And we, still it's a problem. We've never solved that problem. That's the idea of the five percent phase-in, that we'd catch up over, not in one year. We'd catch up in two, three or four, five years. We never got that mechanism. If we could get that mechanism, I would say, yeah, then let's go back to full value. People would know, you know, yeah, they're, they're gonna go up by five percent. Five percent people can, not gonna love it, but they can handle it paying five percent more. But paying thirty percent more, forty percent more, it's, they can't. So, I think we have to go give, give Fred what he needs, try to figure out if we can get that bill through Albany.
Mm-hmm.
How does that affect the tax cap for school districts if an assessment were to go up sixty-one percent in a particular school district? Would they have to have a minus nine point two tax rate or tax cap? Because I, I know that there's, there's some really strange math on the state level if assessment rates go up that much, that fast.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there's a limit as to how much a school district can reduce their tax rate by. As long as they're collecting the same amount of tax that they did the prior year or no more than two percent than they did in the prior year. I'm pretty sure their tax rate can go down to whatever it needs to be in order for them to collect that same.
Right, there is no minimum cap, but the way that it works, and I was wondering if you could shed some light on this. You know, the school districts might actually be putting out negative numbers.
The budget is the budget and.
Right.
The tax rate is set by the budget spread out amongst the assessed values.
Right, yeah.
So, it would all balance out.
Yeah, just because you put, you know, let's say a billion dollars more on, on the assessment roll, doesn't mean that you can collect, you know, a million dollars more in taxes.
Collect the same taxes. It's just.
Right, you collect the same taxes. Yeah, it's just, it's just dispersed. You know, it's still dispersed equally among, you know, the taxpayers.
I would like to see like a school district put at full value and see what it does to taxes. I mean, you know what I mean? Like in a, in a smaller area and see what a full reassessment would do to that one area. Because it's really, it's not really the town taxes that I'm worried so much about. It's the school district taxes. So, if we could take a district and say, you know, that district was pretty evenly, you know, spread out amongst everybody, let's say, everybody goes up thirty percent. But if everybody goes up thirty percent, they're, you know what I mean? They're not gonna be paying more money because everybody's rate is, is elevating the same way. So, I would just like to see like a school district at full valuation and see what that does to the properties in that school district.
So, within the school district, you know, it's some properties probably going up faster than others even within the school district.
So, it's in those rural order that haven't been fairly assessed versus the ones downtown per se, you can't just market them all as the same increase.
No.
You have to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And.
That's what the equalization rate is supposed to equalize the differences, but.
And it does the opposite.
And we've had a.
Something like in Southampton, I guess, I guess the problem is in these communities such as Southampton, East Hampton, the high end is just so much higher than the, the medium end essentially. So, that's what's causing the, the skewing of the.
Why?
Yeah. Maybe, maybe it's not happening the same in Iceland or the middle income communities, whether they don't have the super I N like we have out here. Is that?
Oh, yeah, they definitely don't, yeah.
When we did this in two thousand and nineteen, I think it's fair to, it is fair to say that we did not anticipate the pandemic.
Yeah, nobody.
And the red hot housing, you know, market that we, we've been experiencing for the past two years. I mean, it's just. And before the pandemic, we had situations, communities where people's assessment doubled and they did nothing to their house, nothing, not nothing. And so, you know, they were, they were, their house was worth a lot more money because of what was going on in their neighborhood. And they very often are people who have been living here for sixty-two years.
Right.
Raised their families here and they were having a hard time with the taxes because of this tax program that we had. So, we were looking at that and then the pandemic hit. So, we're here now. Okay.
Yep.
All right, anything else? Elise or John?
Nope, I think that's it.
Nope.
All right, thank you. That's a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Elise.
Twenty all over again.
All right.
Funny because when the first pandemic first hit, people think it's gonna have a negative impact on.
Right, yeah.
All right, so what's, we're way behind schedule. We'll, we'll do some.
Take care.
Thank you. Quick updates. Summer isn't full swing. You guys all know. It's, it's been busy out there. Roads have been busy. Police and highway, you know, still out blinking those lights, helping. People, people seem to appreciate it. It's, we did have meetings with the state. Tommy John, I think you were on that call about twenty-four, on Route twenty-four with Fred. We've had conversations with the county. So, we are getting more cooperation with the blinking of lights. You know, one of the things, you know, thinking about is some sort of pilot program maybe this fall where we can sort of blink a lot of lights, including like in the morning, some rights, some of the lights on thirty-nine at the college and North Main. You know, on, on Montauk Highway, the Canoe Place Road and St. Andrews. Maybe we can get Watermill Light blinking and, you know, we can maybe assess the impacts of blinking those lights on the back roads in Flanders Riverside and, you know, and Hampton Bays on some of the, Fanning and Argon and some of those streets and, and Little Cob Road over in Watermill. We'd have to get some data before and after so we, you know, some counters and do sort of a very big sort of test. And, you know, maybe using some village officers to help with some of the lights. The mayor wants to assist. It's gonna be very, you know, it's gonna be expensive labor wise even to do like a one-week test and, but if it's really successful, we can try to figure out in the future different ways we could pay for it. But for now, we're doing a little bit here and there and it's, it seems to be helping. It's still, the traffic is just terrible. A lot of back roads are congested. And it's, I guess, it's become part of life out here, but it's, you know, it's definitely impacting the community in a negative way.
Yes, supervisor, I was on that Zoom also and I don't think the county really understands the impact that it's had on neighborhoods, you know, the side roads in Hampton Bays. I'm pretty accurate in saying that the highway superintendent counted over thirty-four hundred cars coming out of Canoe Place in one morning.
Yeah, it's crazy.
I mean, that's devastating to those neighborhoods and we're, we're coming up on the school season. It's gonna be even worse.
Yeah, and if you add it up, I don't even know how many cars total are coming through to, let's say, over the Shinnecock Canal. You could count how many cars go over the Shinnecock Canal between, let's say, five in the morning and nine in the morning. I wouldn't be surprised if it's like forty thousand cars.
Mm-hmm.
You know, right?
Yeah.
And, and.
And true.
And the loss of time, you know, if they could have got to work in, in let's say, a half an hour less, you know, you've got forty thousand, probably more than forty thousand people because they're not all just one person in cars. So, that's twenty thousand hours lost or more. There's a huge economic impact in, you know, is there, you know, a way to, you know, is there a way to solve the problem? What would be the cost and how we would fund that cost? You know, I guess it's for future conversation. We can figure that out. But.
Part of that conversation should be community housing east of the canal.
Yeah, it's lots of pieces, the trains.
Which is kind of a whole other thing, but you know, it really does.
But right now, right now, the, the point I'm really trying to make is, is there like a manual way? Because they always talk about physical ways, like we, with lights and turning lanes and road barricades and things like that. But is there a way with, through the blinking of these lights and with police directing traffic? Is there a way to fundamentally make the traffic flow quicker during certain hours? And if we can test it and it works, obviously there'd be a huge cost to doing it on a protracted basis. Then we'd have to figure out how we would pay for that.
So, I just want to say, when I left my house this morning, and I always, I always turn on Waze to see where it tries to take me. So, I put on Waze. It had me go out to the highway to twenty-seven and it told me to get off the Hampton Bays exit and go all those back streets and come out by CPI. So, I left it on and I passed the Hampton Bays exit. It was going to save me three minutes to get, take me through all those back neighborhoods.
Yeah.
So, if we can get twenty-seven and thirty-nine to flow three or four minutes faster, it will keep people on that road.
The algorithm will keep them.
When you think about four minutes, I mean, it's.
Right.
One light.
But the irony of that is this morning.
I agree.
This, this morning when I came from West Hampton, I left at quarter of nine and I just, I don't use apps because they, I think they're fundamentally flawed to begin with.
I just like to see where.
I hear you.
But, but when I, when I get on Montauk Highway, I decided I'm not gonna go up thirty-nine and do that. I just took it and it was clear traffic all the way to the split.
They heard you were coming.
Where there was merging, right? And then, then it slowed down a little bit, but it was unpredictable because the same time, you know, different times, different things. So, that's why I don't like the apps because they don't anticipate these unanticiable events.
One accident throws off everything. But like I, I asked a simple question about why we can't, you know, it's, it's one accident on thirty-nine and it jams up every neighborhood in Southampton and people get home for three hours. And I asked, well, you know, I still haven't really gotten an answer. But when there's an accident on thirty-nine, say, in the westbound lane at four o'clock in the afternoon, why they can't detour the eastbound traffic and let that westbound traffic continue around the accident site when it's just a two-lane closure?
Right. I've asked Chief Skrenicki for some planning of particularly directed at County Route thirty-nine closures and how we, you know, can get some connector roads that we might need. You know, the Greenfield one is a, a good example. If we could get a connection from Hill Station Road into Arbutus, I think is the street there through, on Shinnecock.
Yeah.
Hills Road or Shinnecock Road. I can't remember the name of that, the Paper Road. But there, there may be a number of places where we can do some minor work to create interconnections that could be used in emergencies. And I think that's a good suggestion to, is, you know, if you can divert all the eastbound traffic so that the westbound traffic could get past the accident, particularly, you know, when all the traffic is, almost ninety-nine percent of the traffic is heading westbound, that makes a lot of sense. So, there ought to be a plan so that they know if an accident occurs in this place, this is what we do. If it occurs in this place, you know, if there's a fatality, they close the road in both directions.
Then you just, that's, it is what it is, but.
Well, no, but even in that case, if you had these connector roads, you might be able to get past that too. So, somebody doesn't sit there for three hours waiting for the medical examiner to arrive. It's.
I can tell you when that happens in the east, people just stop.
Or you turn around and go back to where you came from.
You know, yeah, go back to work because, you know, you've got three hours ahead of you.
Yeah.
Or sit in traffic, you know, it's just, it's brutal.
Somebody to say, look, it's gonna be three hours. When you turn around, go, go back home, you know.
I was always told that the signage question is, is particularly a challenge liability wise. God forbid something happens and we're directing traffic opposite from the design of traffic. God forbid something happens and we're directing traffic opposite from the design of traffic, and something were to happen, everybody's getting sued, you know, and that's something that we would have to clearly...
The police are working very closely, you know, Captain Kieranin, you know, and the, you know, with the highway superintendent, Charles McCardle. Everybody sort of wants to make a difference here, everybody wants to figure something out, even if it just takes five minutes off the trip. There's costs associated with it, so we have some serious limitations, but we have a big meeting coming up with sort of all the partners with this idea of taking a one-week period, maybe in October, and doing a coordinated program, where we measure before and after, and see if we can make a fundamental difference in the commute time. But, but the county and the state seem more willing, based on recent conversations, to allow the police to go and switch the lights to blink, which is good, because we haven't always had that level of cooperation. Couple other quick things, I'm sure you heard the cardboard boat race, the cup will remain here in Southampton. It's actually, we didn't, we didn't, we haven't gotten the cuff from Riverhead. It was a really fun day. Devin competed for the deputy supervisor for that Aguirre. The crowd was overwhelmingly Riverhead folks. It's kind of weird, because you feel bad when you win, because like, the whole crowd was rooting for the other...
I'm sure you felt terrible.
I didn't feel that bad, but I tried not to quote.
Take the trophy.
You know, I tried to be a good sport about it, but there's a, you know, the boat's done very well. It's, I think it's like its fourth race. Yeah, it was just a really fun day on the water, and we had other, you know, Southampton Town participants, particularly some students from the robotics team, I think, at Sag Harbor or something, had put a boat together. You know, it's really, it was a really nice event. At some point, maybe South, the Riverhead will actually label the trophy and send it our way. But anyway, speaking of other races, you know, the Hampton Classic is almost up and running, 28th gets going, so, you know, that's gonna affect traffic, too, but the, it's such an important equestrian event internationally, and sort of synonymous now with the Hamptons. It raises a lot of money for the hospital and for other local charities, and, you know, we, our fire marshals were, you know, busy with all the tents and other fire safety issues. Police were very busy, you know, and they will continue to be with public safety at that event, and I certainly hope it all goes well. It goes from the 28th to September 4th is the Grand Prix, the big, you know, the final event. What else? I, you know, I've been particularly busy with the budget. It's a really challenging year, and it's primarily challenging because, you know, inflation is like 9%, 10%. You know, we procure a lot of supplies from gasoline to paper, to, you know, computers, to, you know, everything, you know, office supplies, cleaning supplies, but also, you know, our workers need to have enough salary to be able to, you know, stay with us and work for us and be able to live in the area. So there's a lot of factors, and one of the biggest factors I have found that is making this budget challenging is the New York State tax cap. The New York State tax cap controls how much we can collect from the levy. We're allowed to collect like 2% more without having to take a special vote to pierce the cap, and the problem I'm having is that it's really hard to do when everything is costing you 9% more, you know? The cap accounts for a lot of different things, but it does not account for consumer price index or inflation or dollar value. So it's, it's sort of bogus. If I, you know, I'm gonna do my best, and I think I'll be able to deliver a proposed budget that is within the cap, but I don't think most towns will. I think most towns will have to pierce the cap. You know, another factor I'm seeing, you know, our ambulances are, not out of choice, but out of necessity, are having to pay more and more people. They're having to pay more people and more money and provide health benefits and things like that, that all these years where we did like a 2% increase to our ambulance, it doesn't work anymore. I have ambulances that are asking for 20% increases or higher, you know, and I look at their numbers and I go, yeah, you know, they need it. It's a problem, because our tax cap calculation is across all the districts. So if an ambulance is gonna go up by 10% or 15%, it reduces cap flexibility somewhere else. So these are, these are really challenging times, and you also have more and more people using their homes, so the police want to add, you know, more police officers, because they want to have the right size, the right level of, you know, policing. So I'm gonna do my best as supervisor to present the budget that I think meets the needs of the town, protects everybody, meets the priorities that, you know, we all, you know, believe in, and then it's yours, you know? And then you're gonna have to look at some of my decisions and say, I agree with this, or I don't agree with this, you should fund this more, or you've given too much money in this case. These are, it's really challenging, and I have to say, Dorothy is doing a tremendous job over in the controller's office. It's a tough budget, you know, it's probably more the most complicated one we've ever seen, and, you know, the controller's office is doing a phenomenal job, and every time I change something, they have to go back and recalculate. And so we have these moving parts. We're negotiating with PBA, as you know, over body-worn cameras. Those numbers have to get adjusted into the budget, you know, the recent agreement with CSEA, that all gets factored into the budget. You know, every time there's a little change, you know, we're waiting on numbers, trying to figure out what our health insurance costs are gonna be.
Do we have those numbers yet?
What our pension contributions are gonna be. We have some, but not a lot. We're also, you know, have to make estimates about mortgage taxes and other things. Some numbers we have. When you guys have the budget, you'll have the benefit of some additional numbers that I don't have.
Right.
That will come through, more precise numbers. I was hoping pension contributions would go down, because the stock market came up, now it's, then it went down again, but the way the controller figures that is, I never really understand. It's like a three-year average, and they take this particular look on March 31st, but there's other factors that they use. Anyway, you know, we talked about, you know, the erosion control districts and things like that, and, you know, even that, the debt service on that $25 or $26 million bond, we, it's, it's in the tax cap. It's calculated, it affects the tax cap. So, you know, these are our capital program. If we borrow more money, then we have to program that debt service, and there's real property tax consequences, not just tax cap consequences. So, you know, I'm trying to make sure property taxes stay relatively flat. I prided myself over the years of being able to do that. I'm gonna do my best. I think we're gonna be relatively okay, but it's, you know, one of the toughest circumstances I have seen, and a lot of it is because of that inflation numbers, and as you know, I have to, we had to pay our workers more to adjust for the fact that inflation was so high. You know, they got a 2% increase under their contract in a world where everything was going up by 9%. A cup of coffee was going up by 9%. So we had to make adjustments there so that they could not see a deterioration in their quality of life, which, which we did, and now the budget has to reflect that. So all I'm saying is, it's, these are challenging times, and I gotta do the best I can. You'll get it soon enough. It'll, I believe it'll be on time, and it's just taking up a lot of my time, but that's, you know, that's the role of the supervisor, is to present the budget.
I think we're at a tough turning point, because honestly, every one of our departments here need additional help. The increase in population is really bogging down what gets done. Police officers, bay constables, highway department, Parks and Rec, I mean, everybody is screaming for more people, and there's a need for it. You know, it's just the advanced population we have here over the last couple of years, we had assumed might go away a little bit, just is not, and, you know, it's a shame, because our, our services will start to deteriorate if we don't hire more people.
Yeah, so it's gotta be challenging. All right, let me see if I have it. I don't really have any other things that can't wait, so Tommy, John, do you have any quick updates?
Quick update. South Fork commuter connection in beginning part of September, Friday service will be back, so please get on the train, go to work.
Take the train, avoid the pain.
There you go.
That could be our new slogan. John?
Nothing, we're, I know we're almost 45 minutes old, but I do want to update you guys next time, or when we have a little more time, on some really interesting things that we've managed to accomplish, even in this climate, with energy, renewable energy in particular, so it's pretty exciting. There's a lot of money coming our way, so we're trying to line up ways to get that. It's somewhere on the order of $90 billion that could, will be available to, to us in the state of New York, and particularly out east.
$90 billion?
$90 billion. That's nationally, no, just for us.
Stop the budget crisis.
Plus a handling fee.
Austin Powers.
But anyway, I will talk about that next time, because I know we have Lisa waiting for us.
You saw my youth bureau updates, that's why I wanted to bring them here, because they do do amazing things, and moving forward, I think they're gonna even improve on that, and the numbers are gonna go up. Last night, Parks and Rec, last concert of the season at Good Ground Park starts at 6:00. It's a Beach Boys tribute concert, so come.
Last concert, wow.
Summer's over.
No, it's not, don't say that.
Endless summer.
I just have, I just have quickly, Thursday, September 8th, in celebration of National Recovery Month, there will be an evening of hope and recovery at the Good Ground Park, sponsored by HUGS, Family Service League, Catholic Charities Thrive, and it's really just a way for the community to get together to, you know, celebrate National Recovery Month, and, and there'll be ice cream, there's ice cream. There's also a drum circle and yoga and a lot of other good things going on, and so I hope everyone will join us. 5:00 Thursday, September 8th.
And thank you to the town board for the, for the grant, Chamber of Commerce, for the 100th anniversary of Hampton Bays. You should see some social media posts, some advertising for some good events coming up the weekend after Labor Day.
Good ground.
Oh, yeah, and the powwow is back this Labor Day weekend, for the first time in quite a few years, so.
Anyone else? Any, does it? All right, so we have a few things for executive session, property acquisitions, personnel, contracts, confidential legal advice, those types of things. So I'll make a motion to end our work session and go into executive session on those items.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Vuvia, all in favor?
Aye.
I think lunch is being provided, right?
Yes.